Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us and welcome to this adjourned meeting of the Minneapolis City Council. My name is Barbara Johnson and I’m the president of the city council. So I’m going to call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Worsani.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Liddon.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
We have a quorum present. The first item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda, is our motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We have... I’m just going to look around and see if I see any of our independent board and commission And I don’t see any. So we’ll move on. And I’m just going to read some preliminary statements here. A little over two weeks ago, on November 14th, Hennepin County mailed out a proposed property tax notice which identified the potential property tax impact based on the 2018 budget that was proposed by Mayor Hodges. Tonight’s hearing provides the public an opportunity to comment on that proposed budget, in part based on information that was included in the property tax notices from Hennepin County, as well as information made available by the city. A copy of the mayor’s recommended 2018 budget is posted to the city’s website and a full printed copy is available for public inspection with the city clerk. The council’s budget subcommittee, under the leadership of Councilmember John Quincy, has conducted hearings on each department’s budget request over the past several weeks, all of which were broadcast on public access television, as well as the city’s website. All documentation related to the proposed budget is also posted and available on the city’s website. Before I open the meeting, I’d like to inform folks that we are going to be taking speakers in the order they are registered. If you wish to address the city council as a part of this public hearing and haven’t already registered, I encourage you to do so now. The speaker’s sign-in table is in the hallway, just outside the door. And also, we have arranged for overflow seating if it’s too crowded in here, in room 319, which is just across the hallway, for those who would like to have a seat. A live broadcast of this hearing is available in that space. We also have available our city assessor, Patrick Todd, so if he would raise his hand here, for anyone who has questions about that notice that they received in the mail, Mr. Todd will be here for an hour or so to talk about that valuation notice and the proposed property taxes for your particular property. So, we will have a brief staff presentation to start with, by our chief financial officer, with an overview of the proposed budget. So I’ll recognize Mr. Ruff for that staff presentation on the proposed 2018 budget.
Council President Johnson, members of the city council, my name is Mark Ruff. I’m the chief financial officer. I promise I’ll be brief, less than five minutes on an overview. As council president mentioned, the budget document has been online for a number of weeks. Certainly, the hearings provided opportunity, both live and recorded, for folks to get a sense of what the department presentations, the meat behind the actual document itself. And I will just give an overview in terms of the overall budget, as well as the property taxes themselves. Important thing to mention is the city of Minneapolis has a long history of a structurally balanced budget. What that means is we don’t use cash to fund ongoing needs of the city, because eventually the city runs out of the cash and there’s a major crisis then, that sometimes you see in other cities, or even states, across the nation. And the city still has maintained a very strong bond rating. Standard and Poor’s has a AAA bond rating for the city, and much of that is based on the fact that the city has a structurally balanced budget. The total budget, again excluding boards and commissions, is $1.4 billion. We talk about spending, and spending is both from revenues, as well as some cash for capital items, of 6.2% increase, or $82.5 million over the budget from 2017. We do have to remember that the budget comprises a number of the city’s activities, and the majority of those activities are actually the water and the sewer and the stormwater, the basic businesses of the city, as well as the convention center and the Target Center that are also supported by revenues as well. The general fund, or the basic city operations, is something under $500 million, and that’s where most of the property taxes go to. So overall, the property taxes are less than 23% of the total budget, when we include all of those other enterprises. When we talk about where does the specific proposed property tax levy, which is the subject of the public hearing and the discussion tonight, where does that go? The city does include in the proposed levy, the park boards levy, and in the yellow and a small slice of the light blue is the park board, both for the general park board operations, as well as a tree levy. The MBC is the entity that runs this building, and for those who don’t know, 40% of this building is used by the county, primarily the fourth and fifth floors of this building, used as a detention center. We also have debt that is being supported by a property tax levy that relates to the library improvements, both the central library and neighborhood libraries. And then we also have a legacy cost related to teachers’ retirement funds, which is the TRA in this particular line item. When we look at the actual line items of the property tax levy, and the changes from 2017 and 18, when I talked about the general fund, the basic city services that most cities provide, is contained within the general fund, that’s up 7.1%. The Minneapolis park board levy is up 4.2% and 1.2%. We also have debt service, that’s called bond redemption in this line item, but it’s really to pay for the bonds that we issue for capital items, and most of those bonds are issued for streets and the park improvements, and the 20-year street and park plan that was formulated last year. So that number is going up 4.1%. We also have legacy pension costs, in addition to their teachers’ retirement, which is staying the same at $22 million. The Board of Estimate Taxations, the special electric body, and well as park board and city council members and the mayor that set the maximum levy, they do have one staff person and some operational costs there. I mentioned the MBC, the Municipal Building Commission, and our share of operating this, our being the city’s share of operating this building. The teachers’ retirement and the debt service, I should say the bottom line of the library debt service is going up, because the state has provided some matching funds, so when we increased our levy by $1 million, the state aid went up by $400,000. So that was a net benefit to the city overall. We’re just going to be able to pay the bonds out faster. The cost of the libraries is not going up, and in fact, now that the libraries are run by the county, the city has no operational costs of those libraries, but we still do have the debt service associated with those libraries, and that will be around for another four to five years. Major highlights of the budget. We do, I mentioned the Neighborhood Streets and Parks program. .7 of the 5.5% increase in the property tax levy is directly related to the planned increases in the levy to cover the capital costs associated with that program. We do have an enterprise emphasis on public safety, in addition to the police department, fire department activities, as well as regulatory services, health department, on the broader scope of what is considered to be public safety. It’s not just about the police department. We are also looking at addressing climate change, and part of the overall spending increase was the franchise fee that’s associated with helping to increase the city’s ability to deal with renewable energy, as well as energy conservation programs, and then additional funding on affordable housing. This chart is helpful, I think, when we talk about where does the levy go, in terms of the different functions of the city. And again, these are primarily the general government kind of functions, whereas most of the levy goes to, as well as the capital that I talked about, the debt service, or the payments on the bonds. In terms of overall for the city, we are seeing market value increases for the city. Oftentimes, as the CFO, and I’m sure many of the city council members get the question of, “Well, with all this construction going on in the city, why aren’t our property taxes not lower?” And while having over $1 billion of new construction within the city is great, and something that we’re grateful for as a city, the city has an overall tax base that is exceeding $45 billion. And so, and also the billion dollars of permits doesn’t equate into taxable value, because a lot of those building permits are pulled by public entities or nonprofits, such as the clinic or the hospitals. So, when it really comes down to it, right now, for this year, $720 million of new value that’s coming onto the tax rolls, but with the way the property tax system works, that’s less than 1.5% of our tax base. So, it doesn’t even cover half the cost of inflation. So, I think there is this impression that the city is doing well, and certainly, we feel like the city is doing well, but it is not growth that is going to offset property tax increases, and as well as we have other revenues, which are not keeping up with inflation, such as our local government aid, and so that does put more pressure on the property taxes. So when we see also property that has value going up, it’s most of the value increase that we’re seeing is related to just inflation and existing properties, and that’s true on average. We’re seeing market values for homes, not just single-family homes, but all rental and single-family homes at just over 9%. And the average property tax increase for those, or the median property tax increase for those properties is 7.7%, or about $92 per year. And this does not include apartments, but includes duplexes, triplexes, single-family homes that are rented, as well as owner-occupied homes. I would also just always like to mention a program, and many of us know people, or ourselves have used this program. My mother, I fill the forms out for her every year, this property tax refund that the city has, or that the state has. And it’s not a city-run program, it doesn’t help you make your initial property tax payments, but if you are a homeowner or a renter, and your property taxes exceed a certain percentage of your income, the state does allow you to get a rebate of that. And for many people, it’s not just $10 or $12, it sometimes is several hundred dollars. And so I would encourage anyone in the audience who may be watching this, to look at this opportunity. You can get these forms in paper, where you get your federal or state tax forms, or you can go online, under the Department of Revenue, and just do a search engine for property tax rebate, and would encourage everyone to take advantage of that program, because we do recognize it’s not just how much the property taxes are, that increase every year, but for some people, the overall property tax bill is a burden, and the state does have a program to address those situations. So, with that, Madam President, certainly I would turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruff. With that, we’ll move into the public hearing portion of our meeting, and I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow members of the public to address the city council.
Second.
It moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. So before I recognize the first speaker, I’d like to review a few procedural matters. As I already stated, we will be taking speakers in the order that they signed up. If you haven’t already registered and you would like to address the council tonight, please be sure to sign at the registration table in the hallway, or with the city clerk, and the city clerk is at the end of the day, is here, Mr. Carl. We ask everyone to be respectful of the comments offered this evening. All speakers will be limited to two minutes. If you’re a speaker, we ask that you conclude your comments when your time has expired, and allow the next speaker the opportunity to address the council. The clerks will be monitoring time, and a timer is available to help you monitor your comments. If you also have documents or other supporting materials that you would like to submit for the public record, you can also give them to the city clerk. So with that, we’re ready to open the public hearing. So I have the pleasure of saying that we have a special group that has come to start our meeting off, and give us an honor song. So I’d like to recognize them today, and ask them to greet our council, and then also the people that have assembled here, with an honor song. And my understanding is that during an honor song, people usually stand, so I would ask if you would stand. Now for our public comments, and the first speaker that we are going to have is from a Girl Scout troop that is visiting us today. And we typically don’t let people sign up ahead of time, people are recognized as they come in, but I said, “As a former Girl Scout leader, I’m going to take this privilege and let the Girl Scouts speak.” So, we have Hadley Dobish. And so, why don’t you come and introduce yourselves, and tell us about your troop, and about your experience here in City Hall? And so, come a little closer to the microphones, and you can pull them down. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Hadley, and this is Josie, and we’re here to talk about this, and so it will start right now. Hello, city council members. My name is Hadley Dobish, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I am 10 years old, and I live in the Erickson neighborhood. I am here with my Girl Scout troop, troop number 16566, and we are all 5th grade students at Dowling Urban Environmental School, in the Longfellow neighborhood of Minneapolis. We had toured City Hall today, and we were learning about government, government and school, and scouts. Our troop has been talking awful about what can we do to help our city. Many of us Girl Scouts are also safety patrol for Dowling School. We have noticed that there are safety issues with the traffic around our school. There are two changes we would like, we think would make our school a safer place. First of all, we would like to have a four-way stop signs at the intersection of East 38 Street and Edmund Boulevard, and also in the intersection of Dowling Street and Edmund Boulevard. I do safety patrol at both of those corners on different days, and I can tell you that cars go way too fast and careless through these intersections. Secondly, we propose to make Edmund Boulevard a one-way southbound street, starting at Dowling Street until Follow Drive. All the school buses line up along Edmund Boulevard, and the street is just too narrow to have traffic in both directions, plus parents trying to drop off kids and cross in front of buses. And if someone is parked on the street, then two-way traffic is near impossible. We, as Girl Scouts and the Safety Patrol, agree that if we can get this short stretch of a street turned into a one-way street, it would be a great benefit to the whole community to keep kids safe. Ideally, we hope the city can look at all intersections around schools in Minneapolis, and make sure that all schools have as many stop signs and safety considerations as possible. In this day of distracted driving with cell phones, we think it is necessary for these precautions to keep kids safe. Thank you for listening, and for helping us figure out how to make RIGs a reality and improve our city. We are excited to earn our Inside Government badge today.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. And thank you to your leader. Thank you to your leader. Raise your hand if you would, your leader. Thank you. Thank you. All right. I’m sure your council member, Councilmember Johnson, is listening, so... So I’m going to call the first couple names here, and so if the person that I call first would come up, and then the person that’s going to speak next, to be behind, it just saves us time. So, the first person I have is Margie Miller, and the second is Sharon Bijou. Margie, welcome.
I’m a former Girl Scout, so thank you for all you’re doing. Good evening. I’m Margie Miller. I’m the executive director of Southeast Seniors. We, along with Nicomas and Longfellow Seward Healthy Seniors, provide services for seniors so they may live well at home. We provide nursing services, blood pressure clinics, service coordination, outreach nursing, caregiver support, intergenerational activities, and visiting volunteers for companionship and to reduce isolation. These services are critical to allow older adults to stay living in the homes they love. Together, about a third of the older adults in Minneapolis live in our combined service area. I have a story to share with you about one of our, the seniors we serve. Her name is Artis, and she was, her son was saying that she should leave her home, and she called our program to help her find another place to live. And Judy asked her, you know, “Well, where would you, what would you like to do?” And she says, “Well, I want to stay in my home. I love my home, I love my neighbors.” And Judy said, “Well, I can help you do that.” And so, our social worker, Judy, found her some services. She has macular degeneration, she got vision loss services for her. A group of volunteers are helping her. Lydia, our volunteer coordinator, got her some, a volunteer that’s helping her. So, three years later, Artis is still living in the home she loves, with her family, and is very happy she’s reserving the services that she needs. We are asking you to include $60,000 for senior services in the budget. This amount was recommended by the Department of Neighborhood and Community Relations to fulfill the commitments in the Minneapolis Age Friendly Action Plan. The council and mayor would continue to support organizations that provide in-home services aimed at keeping older adults in their homes. We offer our services on a sliding fee or no cost, and this allows low-income seniors equity in receiving quality services. We provide, I think, relationships with seniors are spreading in the community, and I see my time is up, I’m sorry. But we have received funding from you in the past, we really appreciate that, and we hope that you’ll continue to fund our programs in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Sharon Bijou, and then followed by Veronica Mendez. Am I pronouncing your name okay?
You did very well. Thank you so much. Yes, my name is Sharon Bijou. I’m a member of the Southeast Seniors Board, and so I’m just here to reiterate what Margie said, that we would very much like. We had $60,000 for the three block nurse problems in the past, and we’d like it reiterated, we would like to have it reinstated. As a senior, obviously a senior here, I would appreciate if we could have the people who are here in support of this stand, is that all right?
Sure.
If you could all stand, who are wearing the, you can see our support. This whole thing, thank you, Cam. It goes way back, this, it actually was in Prospect Park 30 years ago, that we started this kind of program, because people were leaving the neighborhood as they couldn’t stay in their homes. So, this is a very important thing. It’s sort of another way that Minneapolis can take care of its own. We’d appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Veronica Mendez, followed by, it looks like Pelean Badboy. I’m probably pronouncing that wrong. Ms. Mendez?
Hi. Good evening, council. My name is Veronica Mendez. I am the co-director of SITDUAL, a Center of Workers United in Struggle. We played a critical role in organizing in the community around winning the $15 an hour minimum wage, around Earn Sick and Save time, and want to recognize and appreciate the role that you all played in making that a reality for folks across the city. I’m here today because while we know that that will make a significant difference for folks, we also know that there are a lot of people that are going to get left behind. The work that SITDUAL has done over the last 10 years, we’ve seen thousands of workers come into our center, who have been victims of wage theft, where employers don’t pay overtime, don’t pay any wages at all, don’t pay people what they’re supposed to have paid them. It’s a significant problem, you know, in Minneapolis, and Minnesota, really, across the country. A seminal study done by the National Employment Law Project showed that in big cities, and when they interviewed low-aged workers, particularly workers of color, that up to 75% of workers had experienced some form of wage theft in the last month. And while we don’t have the specific data in Minneapolis, that was a nationwide, that was a nationwide study that I think is very telling of the problem that continues to exist, specifically in marginalized communities, communities of color, and low-income communities. So we see that the employers that are employing poor folks, people of color, marginalized communities, are actually the most likely employers to violate the law, and not actually give workers the benefits and the basic rights that they fought for and won. And so, we think if we’re serious about racial equity in the city of Minneapolis, we actually need to fund enforcement robustly, such that we can make sure that workers’ rights are enforced, and that money is going to the Civil Rights Department to be able to enforce workers’ rights through investigators, and also through partnering with community organizations, and funding those partnerships, to make sure that workers of color and marginalized workers don’t get left behind. So we’re asking the council to allocate more money into the budget for enforcement in the Civil Rights Department, for both investigators and for community contracts. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bad, Mr. Badboy, am I saying that right? I’m sorry.
Damien.
Damien?
Damien.
Ah, Damien. Okay. Damien.
My name is Damien Badboy. I’m a part of Natives Against Heroin. And one of the things that we’ve seen is, we have seen a great increase in the Little Earth community with heroin overdoses. We’ve seen it throughout the city, which is a very major issue across this country that is happening right now with the drug epidemic period. But in the native community, it has become a really bad thing, and what we’re looking for is to somehow get funding, so that we can sort of sober house for these people that are suffering from this addiction. It’s been, we’ve been standing up and doing what we can in our community, to make sure that these people receive help with Narcan, and with the training of the police officers, and making sure that people understand that there is help for them, and that, you know, in the community that we’re here to help them, and do it in any way possible that we can. And we’ve seen, we’ve seen a lot of epidemics all over the city, but the Little Earth community has seen it really bad, in the Native American community. So that’s why a lot of us are here right now, is to speak about this, to be able to start a sober house here, to be able to help these people, because they are human beings. Just because they have an addiction, does not mean that... Just because they have an addiction does not mean that they're not human beings, and they don't deserve to be locked up just because they have an addiction. So that's one of the reasons that we are here, to help out in any way that we can. And we're just asking for some funding to start a sober house for this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next I have Yazen Uman, and then Queen Kimmons after that. Sorry, I didn't have somebody in line.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for a very fortunate to review of the 2018 taxi. We know several things to increase taxi that is look like right, but I am here for a little too high for my property tax. I would like to little redo to adjust. That's it on the list.
I'm sorry, I'm, I didn't. You want to, you want to adjust your property taxes?
Yeah.
Oh, then you should talk to Mr. Todd back here. When, when you're through speaking, Mr. Todd is right there in the corner, and he can talk to you about your property taxes.
Outside?
He's right there. Raise your hand. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Queen Kimmons, followed by Marilyn Johnston.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Councilmembers. My name is Queen Kimmons. Sorry for my voice. I'm a black woman from a stolen tribe on stolen land, and I'm a resident of North Minneapolis. I'm presenting today on behalf of One Family, One Community, and I'm just here to make a few acts, please. We would like to see some vacant housing funding, so that low-wealth-earning families can also start to build some wealth instead of privileged developers. We would also ask that we would have some money set aside for shelters for adults in North Minneapolis, because currently we have no shelters there, and it's gonna get cold. We would also ask that we have the county's influence, or your influence, please, to push some funding for supportive housing programs. And finally, we would like to have some development without displacement in North Minneapolis. We want a community control for our land, for some rent control, and also, we would like to do, we would like to have development where there is concern for our people over there in North Minneapolis. Thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn Johnston, and then Mary Ann Delby.
Hi. I'm Marilyn Johnston, a Vice President of the Board of Longfellow Seward Healthy Seniors. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about my involvement in this organization, which began with my mother. For many years, she enjoyed being a part of a group of people of similar age and interest and condition. When I retired, I began driving my mother to Healthy Seniors' monthly socials, which include presentations that pertain to the well-being of seniors to help them live healthy, independent, and socially-connected lives. I always enjoyed seeing her interactions with her people of her same age at these gatherings. One of the highlights for my mother was the Healthy Seniors' annual holiday party. It's always a festive occasion involving lunch, entertainment, and an opportunity for each senior to, to select a nice gift from a great selection of donated items. For some seniors, this probably is their only gift and their only holiday celebration. When Healthy Seniors started their gentle yoga program for seniors, my mother and I decided that it would be a good thing to try. My, my mother was in her 90s at the time. I could see how she benefited from the program, and I really enjoyed hearing her proudly tell her friends about her yoga experience. My mother also enjoyed weekly visits from a Healthy Seniors' friendly volunteer, visitor, volunteer. She and my mother would play cards, talk, watch TV, and enjoy each other's company. My mother remained in her home of 63 years in the Longfellow neighborhood until she died in 2011 at the age of 96. My mother was such an inspiration to me, and I still love to hear people who are, who are associated with Longfellow Seward Healthy Seniors reminisce about her. It is an honor for me to serve on this organization. Thank you for considering increasing the amount of city funds for programs for seniors. Thank you.
Mary Ann Delby, and then Melissa Phillips, please. Ms. Delby?
My name is Mary Ann Delby. My address is 5015 35th Avenue South. Actually, I was born in Minneapolis, and I've lived here 92 years. So I love Minneapolis. I benefited a great deal from Healthy Seniors, and so did my husband, who passed away. When he was ill, the seniors came every week to take his blood pressure and check on him. And there was a caring group where we could meet with a counselor, and that helped me a great deal. Now, in these past years since Bob has passed on, I go to all the meetings of Healthy Seniors. Those are wonderful meetings where they have special people who are well-informed about subjects that seniors are interested in or have need for. And so I, along with all those other people, benefited greatly from our Healthy Seniors' meetings. We have trips that we go on, and we have boat rides, which is great fun for us. And now I have a woman who comes and scrabbles with me, which is, she got my name from Healthy Seniors, and so every two weeks we contest, which is great, is great fun. Healthy Seniors, too, means that we can be with other seniors who have the same interests and often are in the same situations we are. And so this is a form of fellowship for us. So we not only benefit from the treats that they serve and from the speakers that they have, but from our conversations with other seniors. And I am blessed to be part of Healthy Seniors. If you would like to come and join us, please do. We meet at Holy Trinity, and that's one Tuesday a month. Is that the third one? I think so. And, and so it's 10 o'clock in the morning. You're welcome to come. That's it.
Thank you very much. And next we have Melissa Phillips, and then Greg Russ. Ms. Phillips?
I'm Melissa Phillips, and I am Easter Women Cherokee and Blackfoot Irish and White, and I am with NAH, Natives Against Heroin, and we're actually against all drugs. We would like to propose for us to have a sober house for all the ones that are on drugs, to help them come to a safe place where they can feel safe and they can get off this stuff, because it's happening too much. I'm actually, I just came about three months ago from Ohio, and Ohio was ranked the number one state of heroin overdoses. And the reason why, the reason why I'm with NAH is because my middle brother was driving when he shot up, and he was actually fell out, and he died right there, almost hitting that truck head-on. So this is happening all over the place, and we would like to do this for our people. We are about our, we love our people. We care for them. And so we want them to be able to go to a safe place, because all the other places, you know, they cost too much for them to get in. And for the ones that really need help and continue to kind of need this help, you know, they're not getting much help. And some are, are just dying too much, and, and with what me and, and Damien do, you know, we, we help bury some. And so that's hard to see, these young ones dying because of this, because they feel like there's no hope, they need a place where they can go so they can feel hope, and they can be loved. So I'd like for you to please keep that in mind, to help us with the sober house. Thank you.
Greg Russ, followed by Russ Adams.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Gregory Russ. I'm the Executive Director of the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority and a resident of the City of Minneapolis. I'm here to speak on affordable housing and to commend the council and the mayor for emphasizing affordable housing in the budget this year. It is a very difficult issue that we face, and I feel that a lot of the budget choices are very helpful, but I want to propose a few more for your consideration. The first, the current budget has an amount of $125,000 proposed for increased security at the MPHA high-rises. This is less than 6% of the cost of security. These funds were originally provided at the level of 1.2 million by the city in 2010. We lost that funding, and HUD does not provide that funding in the operating formulas that we use to support our housing. We are asking that the council consider raising that amount to $500,000 to help us with the security costs. Second, I wanted to plant some seeds here tonight for important changes that will be coming in 2018. We're very excited to see the $1 million in the family housing initiatives, and we absolutely will be coming to the city with proposals, but we also need to explicitly open up the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and to allow us to submit projects along with other developers in the city. And finally, you will hear, our residents will be pushing harder than ever next year to think about the tax levies that we used to receive and the power that the levy might have to help us leverage funds to reinvest in our properties. I'm very excited to be working here in the city. I want to thank you for welcoming me this year. I've really appreciated it, and I'm excited about working together with council next year, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Russ Adams, followed by John Buehlmann.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council. Russ Adams with the Alliance. I want to thank you for budgeting to address our housing challenges. I was part of, our organization was part of a letter that the Make Homes Happen Coalition sent you, but I'm also here to challenge you and challenge all of us to do more in 2018. Besides budget investments, we also need to pass policy reforms that protect tenants and allow them to stay in place, preserve affordable housing apartments, and build additional affordable housing opportunities. Another place to look in 2018 is to overhaul the city's inclusionary housing practices and expand our definition of public subsidies and forms of assistance and measures that trigger that policy. We also need to build to need, and those policies need to name 30% of the area median income as a target for building housing. Now, that's jargon. What does that mean? It means building for an individual who makes the minimum wage, a senior on a fixed income, a person with a disability, or someone carrying a Section 8 certificate. So we need to target that. We also need to create a true Affordable Housing Trust Fund. What we have right now is largely a pass-through of various dollars, including federal money. And that's great, but we need to find a way to create a dedicated, predictable, locally-sourced revenue stream to inform our long-range planning for housing. Finally, the addition of the Housing Stability Coordinator in the budget is a great idea, but let's make that position as meaningful as possible. Let's give them the authority and the resources to work across departments and impact policy. It's not enough to have one single individual overseeing these housing issues. We need to make sure that behind them stand many of the staff and many of the departments, free them up to be creative and take risks. Thank you.
John, thank you. John Buehlmann, followed by Mark Sauter. Mr. Buehlmann?
Thank you all for taking the time to listen to me. My name is John Buehlmann. I'm speaking on behalf of Little Earth YDC. I've lived at Little Earth since 1998. I work keeping the YDC open on the weekends. This gives our young children and teens a place to go that's safe and gives them something to do to keep them out of trouble. It could be a tough neighborhood at times, but the YDC is a place that offers mentoring and helps to keep our youth grounded in a nurturing environment that my own, own children enjoy on the weekends. Due to our historical trauma that we deal with daily, we are people constantly trying to heal. The weekend staff at the YDC has been helping the youth with cultural teaching, beating, making regalia, and teaching them about the drum. I am grateful that I have been given the opportunity to work with the youth of Little Earth, to do whatever I can to be a positive influence in our community. Thank you again for listening to me.
Thank you. Mark Sauter, then Deb Taylor. Mr. Sauter?
My name is Mark Sauter. I live at 4021 16th Avenue South, and I'm here, I guess, in opposition under budget. Last year in 2017, my property taxes went up 10 and 1/2%, and this year they're projected to go up 12.2%. And I, that's just unacceptable in my world. I'm looking at retiring in the next couple of years, and you're taxing me out of my home, and I'm just here to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb Taylor, followed by Mike Johnson.
Madam Chair, City Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Deb Taylor. I am the CEO of Senior Community Services, and because aging is a process we all experience, residents of Minneapolis of all ages can do better when we make sure everyone has what they need to age successfully. More and more of us are aging, but I guess that beats the alternative. A just society treats everyone as equals, but right now we are marginalizing older adults and minimizing their contributions. And to live up to our ideals, we must change this. As more Minneapolis residents live longer and healthier lives, we need to tap into our ingenuity so that we can adjust our systems and policies to make the most of this new reality. We have shared fates. We are all affected. Each of us contributes to the forward motion and the progress of our communities, of our cities. I support funding for older adults because it benefits all of us. We are all aging. We are all in this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Johnson, followed by Rob Hanson. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. I'm always surprised at my restaurant bill when I get the, when I figure in the taxes, it's something like over 10 or 11%. And it always makes me think that we're, we're spending too much money on too much government, and if there is a way we could somehow reduce it, that'd be most appreciated. I think if I was paying an increase in 10% on property taxes, I'd probably go a little bit crazy. But aside from that, going back to the heroin issue, I also lost somebody, cousin, and so I don't know if there's a way to decriminalize the abuser and, and really hit hard the dealer. I'm not really sure, but I, I wouldn't mind a very, a very restrictive law for, for those who, who deal this crap. Other than that, I'm good.
Thank you. Rob Hanson, followed by Maria Wardukul. Mr. Hanson?
Good evening, President Johnson and fellow councilmembers. My name is Rob Hanson. I'm the Executive Director of the West Broadway Business and Area Coalition. I'm here tonight to offer a couple of recommendations on how to use CDBG funding allocations and let the Minneapolis City Council know that Northsiders are paying attention to how city resources are being allocated. First, I'd like to see the City of Minneapolis use Section 108 financing more aggressively. The Section 108 program allows grantees of CDBG to borrow federally guaranteed funds for community development purposes. Section 108 borrowers obtain up to five times the amount of their annual CDBG grants by pledging to repay Section 108 loans with future CDBG grants in the event of a default. Section 108 thus enables grantees to undertake substantially larger community development projects. Commercial property values for many buildings in North Minneapolis often have much- Commercial property values for many buildings in North Minneapolis often have much lower than market rate appraised value. Section 108 could be put to use to bridge commonly encountered financing gaps and can provide opportunity for smaller developers and community members to develop within North Minneapolis. There are numerous examples nationwide where Section 108 financing has been used to help make economic development projects a reality, and CPED staff calls it a large and untapped opportunity for development. Next, the Great Streets Facade Improvement Grant Program should be altered to include interior repairs. As a business association, we have found that having the opportunity to give grants to businesses to make the exterior improvements is a valuable tool in business retention and recruitment. However, many of the buildings in our commercial corridor, for example, are nearly 100 years old and require extensive upgrades to their interiors just to be brought up to code. Costs can range in the hundreds of thousands of dollars to open a brick-and-mortar retail shop. If we're serious about helping small businesses and especially entrepreneurs of color, the Great Streets Facade Improvement Program should be modified to allow for interior repairs. The Northside has suffered from decades of disinvestment. Residents and stakeholders are paying attention to how resources are being allocated, and we need more accountability from City Council and more consultation on the use of city funding for low to moderate income areas from those most infected by it. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Wardoku, I'm probably saying that wrong, followed by Jonathan Banks.
Thank you. Just going to get set up here. Hi, my name is Maria Wardoku. I live at 2905 36th Avenue South, and I'm here today representing Our Streets Minneapolis as the Board Vice President. We believe that everyone in our city should be able to move under their own power without fear, so we are excited to see the new funding proposed in the Capitol Budget for improving pedestrian safety, including the sidewalk gap program and the intersection and crossing improvements program. We're also excited to see support for the city's new Vision Zero goal of eliminating traffic deaths and serious injuries by 2027. We believe that community engagement is critical to the success of Vision Zero, and we are glad to see that it is being prioritized. We have been working with the Minneapolis High Rise Representative Council to chat with folks all around the city about pedestrian safety. We were talking with people all summer at a lot of different community events, and more than 1,700 people signed postcards asking for safer crossings for people walking and biking. I personally talked with many of these people, and I can tell you that the conversations I had were very easy. This is not a complicated issue. People understand that pedestrian safety is about the basic functioning of our city. It's about meeting a basic human need. I want to share just a few of the comments, and we'll be dropping off the stack of postcards at the council members' offices next week. Jonathan said, "Streets are for people, not for cars." Katrina said, "Safety starts and ends with the most vulnerable of our population, the young, old, and disabled." Shirley said, "It's the right thing to do. The elderly, people with disabilities, and all people need safer street crossings for walking and rolling." We believe that the city can and should do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Banks is next, and then followed by John Freud.
Good evening. My name is Maria Conley. I'm speaking for Jonathan Banks.
Okay, is he here?
He is not.
Okay.
I'm stepping in.
Thank you.
I live at 5800 Vincent Avenue South in Minneapolis. I'd like to thank the council for your leadership and hard work on the Community Development Block Grant Program. Our organization was established after the tragic death of beloved community member Flande Costil, who, when the Black community members decided to launch an economic resistance movement, and we are here to encourage the council to consider three important initiatives. We ask the council to include a metric for reversing economic disparities, or a red lens, in all current and future recipients of grant funds. We believe federal funds should be prioritized toward reversing this national trend that Minnesota has maintained since 1960. We believe all recipients should include a red lens to their work and outcomes. We ask the council to utilize HUD Section 108 and prioritize Northside lending and development for these funds. It's a proven fact that the Black community and the Northside have been underserved under virtually every socioeconomic area. Black, Hispanics, and Native American families make less today than they did in 1970. Our current work to establish a Black-led credit union on the Northside is simply not a silver bullet to correct the wrongs done to this community, and we need the city to step in and help. Section 108 provides the council with a timely opportunity to be on the right side of history in reversing the shameful economic disparities we now struggle with. Finally, we ask the council to prioritize homelessness prevention for transitional housing, homeless youth, families, and adults. Homelessness exists on the Northside without any infrastructure. To address housing needs, including homelessness, to housing transitional programs, we also ask the council to invest in homelessness prevention and transitional housing programs that usher youth, adults, and families into permanent, healthy housing. Thank you.
Thank you. John Freud, followed by Kathy Wetzel Mastel. Mr. Freud, am I saying your name right?
Freud.
Freud, excuse me.
Good evening, council members. My name is John Freud, and I live at 3231 29th Avenue in the Longfellow neighborhood, and I'm here this evening representing my community housing advocacy team made up of Minneapolis residents, faith-based institutions, including Jewish Community Action. On behalf of our task force, I wanted to vocalize our support of the Make Homes Happen Coalition in the letter they sent to the mayor regarding this budget. From their comments on preserving naturally occurring affordable housing and housing properties, tenant protections, and support to homeownership education and counseling, these are incredibly important areas to not only maintain, but also foster and grow. We also want to show our support of the council in its efforts to obtain funding for both the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the Naturally Occurring Affordable Housing Preservation Fund. These are necessary programs that have seen continued support, but we also believe that they need more. While both programs are set to receive a total of roughly $10 million for the 2018 budget, we know that the trust fund itself has previously been up to $10 million all on its own. In order to address the housing crisis that we are currently facing, we need to make certain that we have dedicated and reliable source of local funding for these programs. Given the current political climate towards housing and the fact that Minneapolis is currently relying on federal block grants and TIF funding to support these programs, there is no given when it comes to these funds. This makes long-term investment difficult, if not impossible. If we take a look at other cities like Denver and Portland, who have recently passed similar dedicated funding plans at $150 and $256 million respectively over 10 years, we can see that we are not alone in this fight. We can also take away from these cities that have successfully developed these strategies, in fact that they've done it using dedicated local funding sources from the support of the city's residents. Affordable housing is a bipartisan issue that affects every single person in our city, and showing a unified front and dedicated support will go a long way into addressing this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Wetzel Mastel, followed by Al Bosman.
President Johnson, council members, I'm Kathy Wetzel Mastel, here representing PRG and also a member of the Make Homes Happen Coalition. I am here to talk briefly, hopefully, about the need for a continuum, a full continuum of affordable housing options, and want to share a story with you that just gives you some evidence of the demand here. We recently put a video up on Facebook. That video featured a Somali family who had purchased a house that we had developed in conjunction with city assistance. That video was intended as an individual fundraising effort on behalf of PRG. We did modestly well with that, but what happened is the video went viral within the Somali community. As of this morning, 90,000 people had seen the video, almost all of them Somali members, community members. We're receiving dozens and dozens and dozens of calls from that community with interest in living in the city and becoming homeowners, and we're doing our best to serve them through our pre-purchase education and counseling programs. But the reality is, is that the inventory of homes available for those families, whose tend to be larger in size, just doesn't exist, and this is an irony when the city has over 500 vacant lots. I know there are lots of programs being developed at this point to try to work on that issue, but I really think it's incumbent upon you and future administrations to do much, much more on that front. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Al Bosman, followed by Jean Greener.
I'm Al Bosman. I live at 3655 45th Avenue South in the Longfellow neighborhood. President Johnson and committee, I appreciate the privilege to address you, and I'm grateful to be in the company of all these conscientious citizens who are here tonight to help the city make wise decisions in the spending of our tax dollars. However, tonight I'm speaking as a Lutheran and as an infantry veteran to point out how much our national investment in war-making is hurting our human flourishing, removing resources that contribute to the well-being of our good citizens. Speaking as an ELCA Lutheran, I want you to know that both our regional and national assemblies have voted that Lutheran members need to begin to engage in a robust examination on the consequences of our nation's 15-plus years of continuing war efforts. We note that similar resolutions from the Conference of Mayors call for similar examinations. When a majority of our tax monies go to military spending, we have less for human needs. Both the Lutheran Church and the Conference of Mayors have resolutions that point out that when nation-states spend more money on war, local governments have to spend more to address the harm done to veterans and their families, and more has to be spent on refugees. I'm submitting these resolutions separately. Not only is our, 60% of our discretionary national revenue headed for the military, but that area of government is the least transparent in oversight and consequently prone to fraud. Other veterans like myself have seen that personally. If you aren't already aware, you should know that the military is not audited. What's more, the Pentagon admits it puts in false numbers. They call them placeholders in its financial reports. Many of our defense contractors have been charged with and had to pay fines for fraudulent practices. Can you imagine this kind of lack of accountability at the city as well?
Mr. Bosman, can you wrap up, please?
Okay. What I'm asking for is that, for hearings, as the Conference of Mayors had called for, to look at the war budget and its impact on particular departments. Basically, we, Minneapolis sends $866 million for the Defense Fund, and what could that do for other departments? Thank you.
Thank you. Jean Greener, followed by Mary Albright.
Good evening. It's wonderful to be here, and we thank you for inviting us and giving us this opportunity to speak. I'm Chair of, I'm Jean Greener, excuse me, and I live at 1235 Yale Place. I'm Chair of the Minneapolis Advisory Committee on Aging. The committee members represent the wards of the city and several at-large seats. As you can see, several of us are here tonight, and others who represent other senior groups are here. We are asking you to restore or increase the very modest original request of $60,000 for support services for seniors. As you can see, those dollars are seed money for many other organizations that add to it and increase the services that are provided. This is part of, this request is part of the plan and the budget of the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department, and it is detailed in the Minneapolis For a Lifetime Friendly Age Action Program. You, the members of the City Council, reviewed this plan and approved it in January of 2017. As we worked in partnership with our neighborhood and community groups, we developed a plan that calls for working in partnership with the city to increase affordable, accessible housing, accessible transportation, and ways to stay healthy. Number of seniors living in Minneapolis is estimated to continue to grow rapidly. It's increased by 10% over the last five years. We've worked here, paid taxes, raised our families, continue to volunteer. We ask you to restore the $60,000 for low-intensity supportive services. Age may change what we can do, but it doesn't diminish the value we bring to our neighborhoods and to our city. Please keep your commitment to seniors to us by restoring the full $60,000 or more. Don't abandon us and our senior friends and neighbors now when just a little help will enable us to stay here and continue to contribute to our Minneapolis for a lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Albright, followed by Roxanne White. Ms. Albright.
President Johnson and City Council Members, I'm Mary Albright, Executive Director of Longfellow Sword Healthy Seniors. We're a Living at Home Black Nurse Program, and we serve about 600 seniors annually. Our service area includes five neighborhoods in South Minneapolis. Although we provide an array of services to help seniors remain living independently in their own homes, tonight I want to highlight just one of those services, our monthly nurses in blood pressure clinics. These clinics often serve as a gateway service where seniors have their first encounter with our organization, have a chance to talk about health concerns or medications with our nurse, and get their blood pressure monitored. Depending on their individual health conditions, our nurse may follow up with them in an in-home nursing visit, which includes a vision consultation and the possibility of receiving free visual aid projects from the Minnesota Aging Eyes Initiative. We hold nurses in blood, excuse me, blood pressure clinics at nine community locations. Our newest location is the American Indian Center. We serve East African seniors, primarily Somali elders, at Bryan Coyle Community Center and the Minnehaha Adult Daycare Service Center. We see Asian elders at the Korean Service Center. We also provide nurses in clinics at several subsidized apartment buildings, at a senior housing cooperative in our office, and after our monthly senior social and health talks, which Mary Ann Dolby invited you to come to. A number of seniors first found out that they had hypertension by participating in our clinics, and they are subsequently receiving treatment. As mentioned earlier by Marjorie Miller from Southeast Seniors, we're asking the City Council to allocate $60,000 for our three Living at Home Black Nurse Programs in the city's 2018 budget. By funding our three programs, you'll be sending a message to seniors that Minneapolis is an age-friendly city and that seniors can remain living independently in their city of choice. Ask any senior, there's no place like home. Thank you for your past support and consideration of our current request.
Thank you, Ms. Albright. Roxanne White, followed by Tricia Thier.
Hi, my name is Roxanne White. I live at 3755 Snelling Avenue, but I'm speaking today as a member of the Act of Living Committee, or MHRC, which is Minneapolis Housing Representative Council. We are here to add to the six, to add to the request for the $600,000 for the biking and pedestrian crossing money. Just to make sure that you guys know that we are working hard, we have been working hard for the last three years to make sure that pedestrian crossings are safe for our people, for people all over Minneapolis. Senior people and people in the housing, most of us walk and take buses everywhere, or we bike. So those areas are extremely important to us. That's how we get around this city. Very few of us drive cars. It's important to us to have that safety. We have lost members because of it, because of not having that safety. It is hard for us to get across at certain areas because the cars do not recognize pedestrian crossings all of the time. crossings all of the time. It is very important to get this out there for everybody, for all of our seniors. I am asking that you make sure that you get this $600,000 going and working on the pedestrian crossings and the biking areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Roxanne White, followed by Tricia, oh, I'm sorry, Rox, that was Roxanne, excuse me. Tricia Thuer, followed by Sean Seidler.
Hi. My name is Tricia Thuer, and I'm the Outreach Manager at Nakoma's Healthy Seniors. I live in the Nakoma's East neighborhood. So I really appreciate the organization keeping everything local. One of the things that drew me to the organization was the holistic approach to the services, everything from exercise classes to health and education programming to social events. Recently, there was one study I heard that said, "Social isolation is as bad for your health as smoking 15 cigarettes a day." So we are really increasing our efforts to get our seniors out in the community with events, lunches, and that kind of thing. So I am supporting, I'm in support of Margie and Mary as far as asking for a $60,000 support of our programs. I also want to mention that we have seen an increase in the demand for services, and especially our most popular service is our transportation program, where we match volunteers with seniors who want a ride to a doctor's appointment, to the pharmacy, to the grocery store, that kind of thing. We only expect the numbers to increase as the baby boomers start to retire. And with the Southwest Senior Center at 38th and Bryant closing this year, that has made a big impact on folks looking for services. The last thing I want to say is that our organizations are very trusted, and we're often the first places that the seniors call for help because we provide references and referrals for things that we can't help them with. So we are very much needed in the, in the community, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you. Jamie Ceramum and Elizabeth Johnson.
I think you just can't read our writing.
Okay. That's, I pride myself on being, I used to be a nurse.
So I'm Sherri Seifert, and next up is James Seifert.
Okay.
With the bad handwriting. I live in the Hiawatha neighborhood, and I'm here just as a citizen of the city. And I'm asking you to please reconsider increasing the funds to the Minneapolis Police Department and look at some alternatives to policing. And one example I want to bring up is how mental health crisis are responded to. I think we can all agree that there's been many situations, not just in Minneapolis, but across the country, where it's not gone well when the police have intervened in mental health situations. So I ask that we, I want to just plant the seed that you consider some alternatives. I think the money would be better spent, there would be better outcomes, that money would be diverted to people that are actually trained to deal with mental health crisis.
I am James Seifert, and I would like to request that you consider trying to do something like more about climate change. I found there's a company called Climeworks, and they have a machine that can remove carbon dioxide from the air and then uses the carbon dioxide and products, so it can also make money. It says it can also synthesizes, basically, from what I can understand it, the plant that they turn the carbon dioxide into stuff, it generates some waste heat, and they can use that to power the machine that takes the carbon dioxide out of the air. And then it also creates its own water from the process of collecting carbon dioxide. And that's everything.
Thank you. Next, we have Elizabeth Johnson, followed by Erin Zimmerman. Ms. Johnson?
Yep. I am, I'm Elizabeth Johnson. I came from Elquber, Minnesota, and I'm currently a ninth grader. According to Minnesota Center for Fiscal Excellence, one of the top 10 budget problems for Minnesota is public welfare spending. It's twice the national average, and we need to collaborate and set a baseline perception on where we stand, especially because the $15 minimum wage was passed and will be fully implemented in 2024, yet welfare is foreseen to increase in Minnesota, in Minnesota's budget from statistics. Welfare is a trap and is very hard to get out of, and because welfare will not be as needed with the $15 minimum wage, I feel the government handouts will be able to decrease. I say this because the $15 minimum wage affects all small businesses through economy and government and correlates with the social programs that run through Minnesota. I would just like to thank the council for your time.
Thank you. Erin Zimmerman, followed by Sarah Kline. Mr. Zimmerman?
Thank you, everyone, for hearing us speak tonight. My name is Erin Zimmerman. I'm the Development Director at Domestic Abuse Project, and I want to thank the council's continued support of our work in ending the intergenerational cycle of violence. And I'm here to advocate for continued support of our Birth to Three program. The Birth to Three program is the only early childhood program in the state with a focus on domestic violence. DAP's purpose in the intergenerational cycle of violence is by serving the entire family. So we work with men, women, and children experiencing domestic violence. The Birth to Three program is preventative. It's proven to work and has a huge impact on young children towards better outcomes later in life. And as a result, there's a huge cost savings as well for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Kline, followed by Dan Brady.
Madam President and City Council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Sarah Kline. I'm the Executive Director of the Domestic Abuse Project, and I'm here to speak on behalf of continuation of funding for our Birth to Three services. So I want to give you some context about the pervasiveness of domestic violence, not only nationally, but locally within the city of Minneapolis. Annually, there are over 18,000 domestic assault 911 calls. This is in the city of Minneapolis alone, and DAP responds to every single one of those calls. The national statistic is that nearly one in three women is affected by domestic violence in their lifetime, and most of these women have children, young children. Violence, domestic violence, is a public health issue, and we need to address it as such. DAP's Birth to Three services are dyadic, meaning that we're addressing two generations simultaneously. We are working with the primary caregiver, mostly mothers, and the child during therapeutic services. And we know that the research suggests that trauma has a more profound impact on young infants than it does on older children. So our services are incredibly preventative long-term in ensuring that we are preventing children to grow up as adults that become either victim survivors or perpetrators of domestic violence. And I wanted to end with just a brief synopsis of a kiddo that's in our services. His name is Tony. He's four years old, and he's been receiving services through DAP for several months. And he is sitting in play therapy with his mom, and he's able to play out scenes of domestic violence in his household that he witnessed as an infant, and he is four years old. So he picks up the play phone and dials 911. He takes little play figurines and plays out and acts out things that mom can confirm actually happened to her a few years ago. So we know our services work. We thank you for your support.
Thank you. Dan Brady, followed by Tim Hart Anderson. Mr. Brady?
Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak to you. Last night, I spoke from script. I went too long, so tonight, I'm going spontaneous. I would like the council to pull the curtain on the mighty Great Oz to tell me how they determine the property value of my house. I'd like to know how many people, council members or constituents, had their valuation go up $64,000 in one year. 17%. My, my actual payment would be $840. Now, I'm already paying about $4,600, so about $5,400, $5,500 next year. By the time, four years from now, I think my taxes will be the same they will be in Kenwood or Lake of the Isles area, $10,000. How can the middle class live here? Just randomly, how can we make it here? When you guys use game theory or randomness in putting up a map of our neighborhoods and throw a dart and saying, "That's the neighborhood we are going to squeeze to gain more income or revenue for this city." I'm asking for transparency. I would like you guys to mail out these proposals with the comps that you're using. I live at 624th Street Northeast and St. Anthony West. It's a small, little duplex. I don't think there's been a sale of a duplex in two miles in two years of my neighborhood or of my, my address. That's why I'm blown away every time I open up the envelope. I don't know how you guys are doing it. Thank you.
Mr. Brady? Mr. Patrick Todd is here, who is the city assessor. Mr. Todd, would you raise your hand? Would you, he, he can help you, sir.
I'm Tim Hart Anderson. I'm a senior pastor of Westminster Presbyterian Church in downtown Minneapolis. I live at 4753 Emerson Avenue South. I'm here representing the Downtown Congregations to End Homelessness, DCEH. We're part of the Make Homes Happen Coalition. We're a coalition of Downtown Congregations to End Homelessness, DCEH, 15 congregations, about 25,000 congregants, representing Islamic, Christian, Unitarian, and Jewish traditions. All of us, out of our own religious traditions, are deeply concerned about the provision of affordable housing for those who are the most vulnerable and defenseless among us. We engage and work with shelters, with providing transitional housing and developing affordable housing as congregations in the city. We can't do it alone, and we're grateful for your leadership as a city council in putting into the budget good resources for affordable housing. That's message one, gratitude. Second, encouragement. We are here to encourage you to continue that motion, that movement, that movement forward, and we're going to be with you, which is message three. We want to be partners with you in the city. The community of, the communities that we represent, the faith communities in Minneapolis, are eager to be partners with the, with the city council in providing affordable housing needed in this city, so you're not alone when you push for even more funding in future budget years. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend Hart Anderson. Janet Court, followed by Jolene Jones. Ms. Court?
Yes. Hello, City Council and Madam President. I'm Janet Court. I live at 1216 Powderhorn Terrace in the Powderhorn neighborhood. And I'm, initially, I'm going to support the clean energy, the franchise fee, which will help the city in terms of continuing the wonderful work that you've been doing in terms of alternative and clean energy for the city. The other thing that I'd like to just do is support the many speakers that have been here today that have talked about how small amounts of money that are devoted to the elderly, to the disabled, the homeless, and other people who may be vulnerable in our community, that this will be reaping great rewards when these people are, you know, devoted, grateful people that are really working hard to make the city great. So those are my main points. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jolene Jones, followed by Lance Lamont. Ms. Jones?
So, buju mishko benishi indesni koz mong du den. So my name is Jolene Jones. I'm the president and CEO of Low Earth Residents Association, but more importantly, I'm a resident of Low Earth. Now I want to talk about the CPSS funding that came through in 2017. Our YDC, we already have one person speak of it. What they didn't talk about was that we've added an additional 272 hours to evenings and weekends. This has increased our volunteerism and given back to the total in-kind hours of a community over 30,000, sorry about that. Our police athletics league has provided our young women with opportunities, experiencing life beyond our campus, getting them out and about, empowering them to be young women and grow. The Natives Against Heroin has provided a bridge for our most challenged and addicted community members to feel wanted, supported, supported, and given an opportunity of hope and a way out. I'd like to see this in this year's budget. To have it, to do it one time is like putting your finger in a dike and then pulling it out and praying that the dam don't break. It's still going to break. We still need help. I still think that this is very important to fund. I think it should be an ongoing funding for a number of years, up to even maybe five years, to secure a neighborhood to be crime-free and safe for all of its residents, including its youth, especially its youth and elders. So thank you.
Thank you. Jolene Jones, followed by Lance, oh, I'm sorry, that was Jolene, Lance Lamont, Sarah, and then followed by Sarah Chavez.
Yeah, I'm Lance Lamont. I'm the co-chief of Natives Against Heroin. I'm here today just to give you a brief update on the past accomplishments that we had with a really small portion of the grant money that we received. Since July 11, 2017, through September 5, 2017, a three-month period, Natives Against Heroin was able to do 27 outreach events, hand out clean needles, Narcan hygiene packets, light snacks, and do two community feasts. We did marches and marching through communities and surrounding communities to bring awareness to residents distressed with residents requesting us to do patrols within their communities on their blocks because of the high prostitution, the gang violence, the shootings, and people using within the community. Clean sweeps, we walk around high-trafficing areas, using areas to pick up garbage and dirty sharps, needles, and stuff like that, that create a health hazard to children playing outside in residence that live in East Phillips community. Eleven patrols. We put our presence in numbers to deter street-level crimes, and we also act as first responders to community fights and ODs. Our patrolers carry and are trained to administer Narcan. Also, we have created partnerships with Stop the Sigma. It's a whole chunk reservation in Wisconsin, American Indian Movement, American Indian OIC, American Indian Center, Low Earth Residents Association Board, and the White Bison Movement, Waters Treatment Center, Moms Program, New People's Garage. Also, we are in the works of creating a resolution to work with the Minnesota Indian Affairs Council. It's with all 11 Minnesota tribes so that we can collaborate with each other with tribal members coming to the inner cities to sell drugs or commit crimes or traffic women. So we have a collaboration so that we can pretty much pinpoint who's doing what. And we created, six Minnesota reservations have created Natives Against Heroin chapters. It's pretty much on, within the reservations in Minnesota, they have their own chapters where they hold their own, pretty much, they're kind of like AA meetings, NA meetings. They get resources to help people get Rule 25 sober coaching, help people with withdrawals, stuff like that, and also with childcare so that they can attend meetings.
Mr. Lamont, can you finish up?
Yep. And our social media page has 20K followers and counting daily. Our pages and members help others during times of relapse, resources with treatments, Rule 25s, and also serves as a support group. I'm pretty much here to tell you what we did with the money and to show you, like, we, as a community, we understand that there is community, systemic issues within our community, but we believe that the best people to address our problems and create some hope and create a difference within our communities are the community members that actually live there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Chavez, followed by Lennox Thornwood.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Sarah Chavez. I'm a resident of the Jordan neighborhood. Recently this year, I purchased a 100-year-old house. As I received my tax bill in the mail, I realized my taxes went up 20%. Currently in my neighborhood, there's trash and glass in the streets and sidewalks. Also, I've heard several gunshots in the neighborhood. What are you currently doing in Minneapolis with my money? I think you need to reexamine where money goes because increasing the budget will not solve old problems. Thank you very much.
Lennox Thornswood, thank you, Ms. Chavez. Lennox Thornswood, followed by Emily White.
Hi, my name is Lennox Thornswood. I'm here to ask that you guys consider putting a good amount of money into enforcing the new $15 minimum wage and the increments before that. I have worked close to minimum wage the entire time I've worked, and I have witnessed laws being broken constantly. Personally, a couple weeks ago, actually, I discovered that I had several hours missing from my paycheck. And when I brought it up to the owner of the company, I was just written off and pretty much told, like, it wasn't his problem. And it ended up, because I didn't get all of the money from the hours I needed, I ended up overdrafting my bank account, which just cost me even more money. And then, today, actually, this was really aptly timed, was payday, and I didn't get paid. And my rent is due tomorrow. And so, these laws are very important. You've passed them, but they need to be enforced in order for them to mean anything. And I happen to be very lucky. I know that if I don't get my paycheck soon, I will have people I can turn to to loan me some money, but I know there are so many people, and they're not able to speak today because they are working, who wouldn't be able to get out of this situation. And just because it is illegal does not mean employers will not do it. And there needs to be outreach to the workers to let them know and educate them, educate the employers, and enforcement, and people that you can go to with the complaints, a large department, not just the few people that will be able to handle these issues. Thank you very much.
Emily White, followed by Letitia Leon.
Hello, my name is Emily White. I've been working in the food service industry as well as retail since I was 14 years old. I'm currently working as an organizer for a community group called Working America. I would also like to address enforcement. We passed a couple really great ordinances in the last few years, passing wage, increasing the minimum wage as well as earned sick and safe time. But as Lennox just said, none of that means anything if we can't do anything when the law is broken. I have spoken on the phone with a couple hundred people at this point that we are, are one of our members, and 95% of the people I speak with don't know about minimum wage increases, they don't know about earned sick and safe time, and I'm the first person that's telling them. I've also tried to report some violations of the earned sick and safe time ordinance, and it's super, super hard to actually report that. I was in circles, and I devoted like an hour of my time to devote that on behalf of someone else. So, somebody who's actually struggling with that, earning minimum wage, they don't have time to do that. If we could put more money in the budget towards enforcement and have more people working in the Civil Rights Department, we would have an easier, it would be much easier for people to report things when they happen, and they would feel more secure. And I think that's the most important thing at the end of the day. I also have with me some petitions. In Minneapolis, Working America has 24,000 members. Since January of this year, we have spoken with 14,000 people, and I have about 1,500 petitions here signed by our members asking for enforcement to be part of the budget. So, I will leave these with the city clerk, but I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Letitia Leon, followed by Timothy Denherter Thomas.
Good evening, council members. My name is Letitia Leon, and I'm here on behalf of the Power Mentorship Group in Little Earth. Before the Power Mentorship, I was not physically active or active in the community. I didn't have a job or good grades. Throughout the program, I have met many powerful women who have pushed me and encouraged me to go to school and be more active in the community and try new things like new sports and activities. And they have helped me get a job with the MPD, and they have also taught me that school is important, and it is important to graduate. They have also supported me at home with my personal and family issues. We have created a bond that will last forever and that I will cherish. The relationships within the community we have built, I probably wouldn't have been exposed to if I hadn't joined this mentorship. This program is the only community-based and culturally-rooted program run by police officers, which I'm very fortunate to be a part of. We ask that the city council consider us in the 2018 CPSS grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Timothy Denherter Thomas, followed by Maury Friesleben.
Hello, thank you, Council President Johnson and council members. My name is Timothy Denherter Thomas. I live at 3100 Longfellow Avenue. I'm speaking in support of the clean energy franchise fee and wanted to share a couple of comments on that. I'm a member of the Energy Vision Advisory Committee, and I was actually one of the folks doing some of the research on what is the potential impact of energy savings here in the city of Minneapolis. And a series of three studies are all saying that we have a potential to save about 50% of the energy that we use across all customer classes, residents, businesses, industrial, here in the city, and that amounts to about $285 million per year that we could be saving if we were making strategic investments in energy efficiency and clean energy. And that's a, that's a really big impact for families and small businesses here in the city. Really appreciate the council's effort and readiness to consider really investing and helping the clean energy partnerships step up on clean energy and energy efficiency. And just a couple of things to really highlight on that. One, this franchise fee increase, it's really intended to be about creating energy solutions, and we need to make sure that those resources are dedicated to energy solutions and to actually helping the people in Minneapolis and the businesses in Minneapolis reduce their energy costs and make the shift to clean energy. Second, the way we do that matters. There have been utility programs that are funding energy efficiency for decades, and yet only a fraction of a percent of the people in Minneapolis are able to take advantage of those programs because they require high-upfront investment and just having the capital and having the property ownership to participate in those solutions. And so, we need to make sure that we're allocating these franchise fee revenues in a way that is really focusing on equity and access for low-income communities, small businesses, other customer classes that really have not had an opportunity to participate in the clean energy revolution and the savings that energy efficiency can provide. The Energy Vision Advisory Committee has been working on a series of strategies that I won't take the time to go into, but just really wanted to highlight the importance of financing mechanisms that make it easier for people to participate, community engagement, and just revamping program design so that it's much easier for people to participate and see the opportunities and benefits that clean energy can provide. Thank you.
Thank you. Maury Friesleben, followed by Diana Pastrana.
Good evening. My name is Mari Shantel Melander Friesleben. Behind me, I have a number of Lucy Laney parents. I have a couple of Lucy Laney alum who are now sixth graders at Franklin. I also have with me Jamie Lassard. She is the executive director of New Horizons Daycare Center, which is right on the corner of 34th and Penn Avenue North. And then I have my wonderful Mr. Michael Friesleben, who's also with me, who gave you almost 30 years of very dedicated and very loyal police service. And we are here, not necessarily to ask you for money, but to ask you if you would make us a priority. And oftentimes, when you develop a budget, just like what we do at home, as you develop your budget, is when your priorities really begin to emerge. Now, listening to everybody speak before you, I imagine that identifying competing priorities is difficult. The Girl Scouts were adorable, and so how do you say no to compelling arguments? But I would hope that between Jamie's 200 babies and Lucy Laney's 500, that you would please consider us when you look at your priorities for 2018. We are doing everything that we can to produce beautiful children for the city of Minneapolis. And we are asking that the city of Minneapolis, you as the city council members, not operate in isolation of the school board or of the county. But if you would please consider looking at what each other are doing and see if there's something that can benefit us. We are right smack dab in the middle of Lowry to 36th. It's a difficult reality. I think we're doing a great job in spite of it, but ultimately, the messages that the regular gunshots and crime that our children are exposed to is difficult to combat. If you would be so kind as to go into 2018 with us on your mind, we would deeply appreciate it. One of my parents, Diana, is going to speak right behind me, and then later, we have a couple more parents, and we have one of our former Lucy Laney students that is going to speak to you as well. Thank you for hearing me out.
Diana Pastrana.
Thank you for listening. I'm also not asking for anything tonight, but I am here tonight just to shed a little light on the life of a six-year-old that lives in the hot zone of North Minneapolis. I live on the 3600 block of Oliver. I have four children that attend Lucy Laney. I have four children that were in school that day while they were shooting in back of that school. I have four children that have trouble sleeping at night because of the nightly gunfire, the daily gunfire. Since June, there have been three major shootouts in my yard. The first one was at 8:00 AM. They were shooting back and forth across the streets. I don't know how many rounds. The second one was at 6:00 PM. They let off 30 rounds in my backyard. I have a bullet hole in my siding. This is the artwork of my six-year-old. Beautiful from that point of view, I'm sure, until I explain it a little bit. Reina came to me and was thrilled, showing me the sun, and this is our house in the picture. I'm going to show you over here how she showed me. This is our house, Mom, and look at this slide, how it goes up like this. And over here, they're shooting in our yard, and there are bullets that go all the way across this picture. This is the artwork of a six-year-old. This is not normal. This is not okay. And my children should not want to sleep underneath their beds at night. I should not have to be making my basement comfortable for my children to be ducking for cover because on the north side, we are in a different kind of storm. And I'm just going to reinforce what Maury said. Please, please don't forget about us over there. We are in a hot zone. I live in a hot zone, and my children go to school in a hot zone. And we are depending on you to keep us safe, the MPD to keep us safe. And it starts here at City Hall.
Thanks, Ms. Pastrana. I have Tabitha Montgomery, followed by Corlin, one name, Corlin, Tabitha Montgomery. Corlin. El Bostuma, Austin. Oh, I'm sorry. This is Tabitha, okay?
I am, thank you. Sorry, I was in the overflow room.
It's okay.
Good evening to us council members. I am Tabitha Montgomery, and I currently have the pleasure of serving as the executive director of the Powderhorn Neighborhood Association. The association is encouraged that the city has, as affordable housing remains a priority, but we must insist that the council also look at line items that improve livability. Over 50% of Powderhorn residents are renters, and a third of those are cost-burdened. Through the association's direct outreach to renters and its involvement in the Minneapolis Renters Coalition, we are aware and have become painfully clear that substandard housing conditions affect many of our renter population. And this is primarily the case with those who are low to moderate income and certainly vulnerable communities. These residents and all residents need the ability to escalate property complaints that they can be 100% assured will be addressed in the fullest and complete manner possible. To this end, I ask the council to support, within this 2018 budget, two additional dedicated complaint-driven inspectors within the Fire Inspector Services Division within regulatory services. The association believes this will help make additional inroads to ensure renter livability, concerns can be addressed more completely and concretely. The association and its constituents recognize this, that the council has an inordinate job in front of it, but we appreciate your timely attention to this matter as we have a multitude of renters who are in conditions that we cannot possibly fathom on a day-to-day basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Corlin, followed by El Bostuma.
Hi, my name is Cory Lynn, and I'm the Community Partnerships Coordinator at Powderhorn Park Neighborhood Association. And I'm also speaking as a renter from Ward 8, and I live on 3212 First Avenue South. I'm speaking along with Tabitha to support the letter that the Minneapolis Renters Coalition sent out last week regarding the increase of the regulatory services budget. I support the current budget addition of the one complaint-driven inspector, but ask again for an additional two inspectors to be add for a total of three. Why is this important? I'm sure you all know about the current housing crisis and how low our vacancy is, vacancy rate is lowest in 10 years. So it's crucial that we have reliable inspector system with more resources to make sure that our large unit buildings are safe and then are being held accountable. So we would also like to ask that the additional inspectors have an intentional focus, like an in-the-job description focus, on tenant communications and engagement as well as habitability, not just getting checkmarks and getting the job done. I'm hoping that the Housing Stability and Policy Coordinator will also be cross-departmental as the renters' issues are not just a part of one department. Thank you so much for using our budget to create the safety and happiness of our renters with these additional inspectors. And I also would like to say that I support the Make Homes Happen request as well as community powers and fiduciary financing, as those are all things that are influencing our renters in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. El Bostuma, James Stadler, followed by Ronell Robinson, James Stadler, Ronell Robinson, Ronell Robinson. Come on in, ma'am.
Good evening, council members. I'm Ronell Robinson. I'm a program director with Way to Grow, and we have been receiving CDVG funds for many years and appreciate that funding. We are a program that serves families prenatally through third grade, and we serve in all areas of the city of Minneapolis. Our office is located in near north, but we try to work with families on their self-sufficiency, their stability, but primarily, we're doing early learning education in the home, hands-on curriculum, to prepare children for school success. And as children enter the school systems, we're also working to make sure they maintain their reading levels, parents are engaged and involved in their education, and just making sure that those families have holistic connections to community services and information. I just want to thank you for your time and your funding.
Thank you. Trina Port, followed by Shalay Castro. Trina?
Hello, Trina Porti. I live in the Prospect Park neighborhood.
I live in the Prospect Park neighborhood. And this was addressed to the mayor, who sadly is not here. I'm glad our new mayor is here. And this also goes to the outgoing city council members. After this hearing, you have a choice to make. How do you want to be remembered? Do you want your legacy to end with a budget that spends $8.5 million on the Super Bowl, but only $25,000 on helping girls and boys who are used by sexual traffickers? That is, that is in this budget. That's shameful, and it's hurting these young people irrevocably. Or do you want to change your budget and help the people of Minneapolis who are most in need, people like those children and like women heads of households, the largest group of people living in poverty here? After the September 13 budget hearing, I asked the Minneapolis CFO if it's possible to create a Make Sense for Women Fund, which would be a charge at parking ramps where 50 cents of each parking fee goes to a dedicated fund for women-headed households. He said, yes, it's doable. Public transit went up in 2017, so raising car park fees in 2018 is fair. All you have to do is change your budget and use that fee money for something like rent subsidies for women-headed households. It's that simple. Your legacy can be disappointing or courageous. I hope you choose courage, courage to change the focus from business as usual to doing something good to help people. Thank you.
Thank you. Shalaya Castro, followed by Anthony Keith.
Hello, my name is Shala Castro. So I'd like to start by saying I started working at the Youth Development Center in Little Earth in July 2017. It was my first job or internship I had ever done. In August 2017, I started going to college at MCTC full-time. Thanks to Frank Downwood, I was able to manage both being a college student and working at the Youth Development Center, or as some people call it YDC. I could have worked at any other place, but I chose to work at YDC because of the kids and the environment. I would say that the greatest gift is being part of each kid's life, and people who are not from the community may not understand that I am, or that the importance of the center. Everyday kids walk in through the doors to play games, use the technology to ask for homework, help to eat, to enjoy themselves, and the list goes on. Not only is it my job to work there, but it's also my responsibility to be a nurturer for the kids. The staff members are a huge part of the kids' lives. We create a safe zone for them while sometimes the outdoors is not the safest place. Thank you.
Amathini Keith, followed by Phil Murphy. I probably messed up your name, I'm sorry.
Pretty good job. So my name's Amathini Keith, and I am the Director of Client Services at the Domestic Reviews Project. And I'm here to talk about the importance of birth-to-three funding. So when we think about three-month-olds, we usually think that they have three main capacities, and that's to eat, to poop, and to sleep. And while that is absolutely true, we also know that by three months, infants are actually very aware of relational dynamics between their caregivers. As a mother of an 11th-month-old, that was really shocking for me to learn that at three months, my child, who seems like they're, they're really just starting to turn on, has so much understanding of what's going on in my household. And the way that that really comes about is that this understanding comes through internalized experiences of what's happening in their environment, through their senses of touch, taste, sound, and sight. And so that was a really, it's a big part of the work that we do at DAP, is to help families understand that even at the young age of three months, that there's so much that's going on in this little human being. What we also know is that there's this concept of epigenetics, and that is that gene activity and expression can be impacted by factors that are external to the body and in our environment. And what that means is that changes can happen simply by what we're observing in our environment, and that those changes really last a lifetime for that person and can actually impact several generations afterwards. And so the work that we're doing at DAP is to really be able to provide services and connection and education around these things, so that we can shift and stop the transmission of trauma. And as a mother and as someone who has the privileges of this information, I'm able to use that in my parenting with my child. And by providing this funding, you're providing access to the most vulnerable population in our community. So thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you. Philip Murphy, followed by Scott Engel.
Thank you, Council President Johnson and council members. I'm the steward over one of the oldest businesses in the city. We started in 1892 before our neighborhood was Minneapolis. It was Crystal Lake Township. And we're on our way out for a couple reasons. And it was Crystal Lake Township annexed by the city in 1896, the greenhouse business on Dolling and Humboldt, North Minneapolis. We're faced with challenges of not being on a great street's business node, so we have no access to storefront improvement grants. Earlier, somebody was suggesting make those grants available to people inside. Well, first, they should be available to businesses before we're fixing people's interiors. So forget the nodes, make them available to businesses. The businesses on Lowry, one of them got $20,500, six tenths of a mile from me a couple years ago to fix their front end up. I can't get that. So now we'll move on. Money, 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 money. If we don't have it, we can't do it. People say, well, Phil, how come your business looks like it does? Well, what is my incentive to dig into my pocket to improve my building when others get that money for free? Well, there isn't. There is no incentive. So we don't do it. Okay? That's our fight back. So that's why it looks like it does. So that's why the property's for sale. We're all done. March 9, four people got shot, everybody in one car, Fremont and Dolling, hot zone of Minneapolis. The shooters ran to the west, they ran right into my property, kicked in one of our greenhouse panels, it was below zero. Our alarm system went off, temperature dropped to 35 degrees. We lost 50, 50 years' worth of work because of our proximity to crime. Why? Because we're in North Minneapolis. Simple. So property's for sale. There's nothing more we can do. You know, the, the, um... They caught those shooters in the cemetery, by the way, with the state patrol infrared radar, March 9. Our taxes, almost every resident in North Minneapolis, their taxes went up 20% to 24% this year. Now, consider, in the 4th precinct, no neighborhood has escaped the strife of the sounds of gunfire. Every neighborhood in North Minneapolis has experienced the obscenity of people trying to kill people with a firearm. That doesn't happen in other neighborhoods. That's not normal. It should be unacceptable. So the community is complicit in our crime, because it's happening in the community. That has to stop. City Council, the police, Social Service, Row, they're not going to be able to solve our crime problem. We have a community problem. So how do you stop that? Well, I don't know. I have ideas. I've been very critical of everybody sitting in front of us here, including Mayor Hodges, for years, because these problems are so profound and immense.
Can you wrap up, Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I will. Just consider, if you lived in a neighborhood where you had to face gunfire, and in North Minneapolis, it happens every day, there's not a day that we escape North Minneapolis without gunfire. So when Maury Milander's up here talking about the strife at Lucy Laney, I've been on Penn Avenue at Broadway, bullets have whizzed past me, hit the car next to me, and gone into Broadway Liquor.
You're going to have to wrap up, Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, so people talk about improvements, crime. This is the takeaway. North Minneapolis is the future of the entire city. So the problems we have will expand to the city.
Mr. Murphy, your time is up.
And the progress that we can make to move ahead will go with the city, too. North Minneapolis is the future of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I called Scott Engel, and I think one of our previous page people is here, Mr. Staples. So Scott Engel? Scott Engel here? Sorry. Did I call you? Maybe I didn't. Okay, Mr. Engel, why don't you come up, and then Mr. Staples will be after you.
My name is Scott Engel. I live at 3748 19th Avenue South. I'm here tonight to thank the mayor and the city council for including some funding this year in the budget for pedestrian crossing improvements, as well as sidewalk infill. I'm here representing the most vulnerable road users, people with disabilities, seniors, children. We've heard from a lot of them tonight, Girl Scouts asking for crossing improvements, seniors saying, I'm scared to walk. And these resources will help make that happen. Just yesterday, Public Works staff gave several of you an update about the pedestrian crash study. There's a lot of work to be done. There are a lot of people being hit by cars in the city crossing at intersections. So this funding is sorely needed. And I used to serve on the Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and I can tell you, these intersections are not a surprise to me. When I was on the committee five years ago, we knew these crash locations were dangerous at the time. There just haven't been resources to do anything about it. So this is a good, good first step. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jemeth Staples, followed by Julia Curran.
Council President and the city council members, my name is Jemeth Staples, a resident of North Minneapolis. I'm a specifically engaged social entrepreneur in the renewable energy industry. I currently serve on the City of Minneapolis Energy Vision Advisory Committee and as the Chair of this federally designated HUD promise zone. I were my first head as Chair of the Economic Development Committee of North Minneapolis. I applaud the council for going after that designation of the promise zone, considering the economic and racial issues that we have there. As a social entrepreneur in the renewable energy industry, I have made it my objective to help correct the economic issues through free-market economics. However, it comes with a caveat, that we use the promise zone for what it was used, what it was designated for. That's to acquire federal funding for the purposes to support our community. I'm asking that we repurpose some of the federal funds that come from CDBG grants to actually go towards supporting some of the, some of the economic coordinators and some of the necessary pieces that are important to help get us to where we're supposed to in North Minneapolis. Switching hats, I'm also going to, I'm also here to encourage the franchise fee of Minneapolis, City of Minneapolis. It's not only important to increase the franchise fee, but that we also utilize those resources for the purposes that we're designating them for, and that's to make, create equal access and opportunity and equity for low-income community solar people. Finally, I would like to thank all of you who voted for my company to actually be the developer of, one of the two, one of the two developers of the low-income community solar garden in North Minneapolis. Thank you.
Julia, Julia Curran, followed by Eric Immler.
Hi, I'm Julia Curran, and I live in Ward 7. I'm speaking in two capacities today. The first is as a representative of the Executive Committee of the Pedestrian Advisory Committee. We are very excited to see the dedicated funding for pedestrian infrastructure coming into our city's budget. It's something that we've been hoping for and asking for, for a long time, and it is great to see that our sidewalk gaps will start being addressed, and the intersections and crossings that are so dangerous for so many people on foot will start being improved as well. I'm also here as a citizen, somebody who walks the city a lot, thousands of miles so far, with my father, who's 97, although I now remember I wasn't supposed to tell you how old, forget that, who is a distinguished member of the community, who has also put in his own tens of thousands of miles on foot. And we experience it as a place that is both vital to our health and well-being, as someplace where we can see neighbors, connect with others, stay healthy, but also a place full of pitfalls and potential risks for both of us. The city that we have right now is not an easy one to walk around at the best of times. And for those who are aging, for those who have mobility challenges, for those who aren't sure how to walk on ice, because this is the first city they've lived in that has icy sidewalks, there's a lot to be wary of. The dedicated funding for starting to look at pedestrian issues and for starting to improve this infrastructure is vital, and we're really excited to see it in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Immler, followed by Megan Antonich.
Thank you, Council President Johnson and fellow council members. Forgive me, I'll be reading from something I wrote, because I'm not used to this. My name is Eric Immler, I live at 2629 18th Avenue South. I wanted to speak in support of the current budget, and specifically the clean energy franchise fee that you have before you. This last year, I worked at For Holland Neighborhood, and I was part of the Community Engagement Pilot Project, which I was tasked with surveying renters and landlords who were in our neighborhood alongside Corker Neighborhood and the Comusties Neighborhoods. Holland itself is a majority people of color, and 57.5% of the renters occupying it, of the people there are renters. Two-thirds of these renters fall under the cost-burden households, and 31% of these renters consider English as a second language. With the help of language interpreters and these other neighborhoods, we interviewed hundreds of tenants, 70% of whom identified themselves as people of color. Specifically, we're interviewing these tenants and landlords about current utility programs that existed, and whether or not they had heard about them. Of the tenants that we talked with, only 20% of renters were actually familiar, familiar with the Home Energy Squad program, which is the only program available for renters to participate in, and 11% knew what actually the Home Energy Squad was. This program has been around for well over a decade, and most of these respondents who had heard of them lived in one to four-unit properties. Needless to say, and I know you have already heard from many of your constituents, that we have a problem with our multifamily property, and the most vulnerable in our communities are facing that. So I am very encouraged that you all are putting your money where you've set your values are, and are working on community outreach, better financing, to make sure that these programs are available for the folks that, that we really want to keep in the city. And so I thank you very much for your time, and thank you again.
Megan Antonich, followed by Alexis Valdouras, and I'm probably saying that wrong. Megan?
Hi, everyone.
Ms. Antonich, excuse me.
I'm the mother of three beautiful Lucy Laney students, and I'm going to be sharing my time here with another mother of a beautiful Lucy Laney student. Her name is Elizabeth. And we're here today just to kind of bring back to the forefront of your mind, safety concerns within the area of the school. We do both live around the school. I'm about eight blocks away in the Jordan neighborhood. I believe she's a little closer to the school. Over the past seven years, I've been living in the Jordan neighborhood. My family has grown there, and we've done all we can within our own power to try to keep the area around us safe, to try to keep communication open with our neighbors, with landlords, you know, of course, calling 911 if need be. But I just wanted to just kind of bring that up and allow Elizabeth to share a little bit of her concerns as well with the safety around that area.
Thank you.
Hi. Okay. My daughter is a student at Lucy Laney. She is four. On November 17, I received a robopull from the principal about a shooting in close proximity to her school. My heart instantly sank to my stomach, and I felt sick. I was scared, I was nervous. I had a sudden instinct to go to her school and pick her up, but I realized that I live fairly close to the school as well, and I wondered if it would even be safe to bring her to my house. My coworkers live in Coon Rapids, and all they said was, isn't that typical of that area, with little to no alarm or concern? I was angry, I was confused, I was pissed. It feels like the only people protecting my child and prioritizing our safety are the parents and the faculty at Lucy Laney, but that's not enough anymore. It feels like people don't care that while my four-year-old was learning to recite my phone number, people were shooting a block away. So I need to know that my child, as someone in city council that's making her a priority, I need you guys to make that a reality. I need you guys to make that a reality and help us make the hot zone a safe zone. Help us protect the kids of the community that are going to be sitting in the same chairs that all of you guys are sitting in right now in a couple of years. Please make our kids a priority in the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, and I'm sorry, I really...
Hello. My name is Alides Valdourinos. I'm here representing the workforce of Minneapolis that people have spoken about that often gets overlooked. I want to ask you to pay attention to allocating resources to enforcing $15 an hour. I've experienced wage theft in Minneapolis twice in businesses that rely on the blood and muscle of a workforce that is constantly overlooked. Enforcement and funding enforcement, excuse me, are necessary because not being able to eat, pay rent, like people have said, or get to work safely are often the results of wage theft. That, along with bills created out of overdraft fees, which I know is something else you guys heard, have placed a shame of defeat on me that make it difficult to call home. It's hard to talk to my mom when all I have to show for her sacrifices is holes in my Enforcement just means that Minneapolis would be on the road to progression that it so greatly boasts. We talk about it all the time, about how great Minneapolis is. Enforcement needs to be there to make sure that that's a reality. Although Minneapolis benefits in every way from the busy diversity that makes this city run, and that has drawn people in here for years, this diversity is constantly suffering from these injustices, and wage theft is one of them. Progression isn't the aesthetic makeup that should be placed on Minneapolis's face. It's the aspiration that the city would treat its people with respect and nurture them to thrive. Funding for enforcement ensures that we continue to be the energy that you need to function. Enforcement ensures that I don't feel alienated by not having what I work for. That's all I have to share. It's my whole experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, with Daniel Maddox, followed by Sam.
Hi, my name is Daniel Maddox. I am here representing for 15-0. And I'm in support of 15-0. And basically, my issue is, is that I am a victim of fraud, of worker fraud and wage theft. And I feel like the city of Minneapolis does not appreciate me by how long this has happened to so many workers, and so many people, from so many different communities. How can you just sit back and say that these people individually, you know, there's nothing I can do at the moment? They can't say that to the landlord. They can't say that to their children when they're hungry. They can't say that to their sick grandparents, or the child that they have to pay for healthcare because they can't afford to, you know, get actual appropriate healthcare, which has been going on for too long. And one thing I would like to see changed is that we need to make sure that the city is going to implement funding for making sure that there is no more wage theft. We are unappreciated, and this has gone on for far too long, far too long for many communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
There was, I just have, the next two speakers just wrote down their first names. So there was Sam, and then after Sam is Nikki. Nikki is here, or could come. All right, sounds great. And then the next person is Frank Durand.
My name is Sam. I'm an organizer with the Twin Cities Coalition for Justice for Jamar. I'm not going to start off my speech by saying thank you for the fact that many of you are outgoing on the city council and the mayor, because quite frankly, people didn't do their jobs, and they deserve to go outgoing, to be outgoing. And in particular, I'd like to speak on policing issues and the travesty of the criminal police department, who, people talk about being shot in north. Yes, people are shot in north, that happens, that's a fact, we know that's a fact. But across the city, people have been victimized by police. And while you have people here, if you were listening to what was said tonight, there's a common thread of the exploitation of working people across the city being exploited by their bosses, by the police department, by corporations. And here, you all are going to bring more exploitation of the Super Bowl into the city. I hope you're ready for that, because I know we are, as a community, defend ourselves from the exploitation that we continue to have, and the people in this room continue to let go further and further. It's extremely hard to listen to the injustices that people are testifying here tonight while many people sit on their computers, and I hope they actually are going to look back at what some of the people said tonight and take what they said to heart. The people in this room are planning to increase the police force, but right now, you have an extreme contradiction where you can't even control the people that you have employed by the police force at this time, let alone your white supremacist police federation leader. So these are things that we really need to be looking at, instead of where we can shuffle money to people from out of, for corporations out of the state. And I hope, and I'm glad you guys are at least planning to get reimbursement for the police force presence that you're going to have to spend and taxpayer dollars you're going to have to spend. Because the fact of the matter is, people in Minneapolis are sick and tired of the same thing that they see every day. And if you listen to everybody here who was representing, they're talking about being exploited, and people are not being listened to. So to those of you who are leaving, farewell and good riddance. And for those of you who are coming in, you better be prepared, because we're not finished yet.
Nikki, followed by Frank Downwind.
My name is Nikki. I live at 1005 East 31st Street in Ward Nine. I'm here in support of MIRACs, that's Minnesota Immigrant Rights Action Committees Amendment from Municipal IDs and their continued work to make Minneapolis an actual sanctuary city and not a fake one under the leadership of racist sexist Sheriff Stanek. I'm also here to call attention to the council's weighted, biased, and terrible budget increase for the police department. After the deaths of Jamar Clark, Philando Castile, Fuji Lee, Fong Lee, Marcus Golden, and Justine Diamond, not to mention the war waged at Standing Rock last year, in which Hennepin County troops participated, there is no accountability, and this council continues to pour resources into the department. There must be accountability in this budget, too. There must not be more incentive for police to police as per the norm. Please invest in community centers and services instead, and stop giving killer cops more handouts. People need more resources to protect ourselves from killer cops. There was a lot of attention tonight given to gun violence in North Minneapolis, and I hope you are also as concerned about police violence in Ward Four. Philippe, I hope you do a great job, a better job than has been done by Barb. Thank you.
Frank Downwind, followed by Scott Borden.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. And I do agree with this last speaker that the answer is in community solutions over law enforcement any day. With that, I'm just here to speak briefly on our grant we received from the city. It was the Collaborative Public Safety Strategies Grant. It was, our program was called Little Earth Safe Zone. Essentially, what it did was open our center up on the weekends. By the end of the program, we'll have over 300 additional hours that our youth were able to access the center during the weekends and later on in the evenings. This is incredibly important in a very dangerous neighborhood. Our kids need a safe place to go. I'm looking for continued support from the council and the city to keep things like this going. Our kids know this date is imminent, that's coming, the end of the year is when this program stops, and there will be no place for them to go on the weekends. So we're looking for continued support. This program hired specifically out of the community. We hired staff members from Little Earth, from the community, and we created five or six jobs through that, good-paying jobs. And I think they started out at 15 an hour. But we also trained over two dozen adults in de-escalation techniques. It was a pretty rigorous course. It was eight hours long, and they went through the ins and outs of de-escalation. We would really like to continue these programs into the year. I know there's some CPSS money coming through again. This one was off to a pretty rocky start this year, and community members were kind of pitted against each other over this money. So if there was a process that was fair and clean, where we could all apply, I think it would be for the better. Thank you.
Scott Borden, followed by Jasmine Fundmaker.
Good evening, President Johnson, council members, and fellow citizens. My name is Scott Borden. I live at 3724 Blaisdell in Ward Eight. Special thanks to Councilmember Glidden. I absolutely love living in this city, and I think I get a tremendous value for my tax dollars. I spend all my time and energy in the city. It pains me, though, that many people in our city have a much different reality. I'd like to speak in favor of pedestrian crossing and sidewalk funding. You've heard several people talk about safety issues. I want to talk about the fun associated with walking. I'm a volunteer crossing guard at Lindell Community School. I've done that for the past nine years. Walking is a safe, is a sign of a vibrant neighborhood. It's good for the local business economy. It's good for the environment. It supports a healthy and active lifestyle, and it supports academic achievement as well. So I would strongly encourage this council to support funding for pedestrian improvements. And lastly, I want to say, I'm very proud that walking is also an integration strategy. It brings together people from different walks of life, from different religions. Lindell Community School and walking has been part of this, is the only school in Minneapolis public schools in more than the last 10 years that has come off the racially identifiable school list. Thank you very much for your time and your service to all of you, the council members and the people here tonight.
Thank you. Jasmine Fundmaker, followed by Sandara Walden.
Good evening, council. Jasmine Fundmaker, 2501 Cedar Avenue South, Little Earth of United Tribes. I'm here representing Natives Against Heroin. I graduated from a cultural-based treatment this March of 2017, and when I graduated, I had no safe sober place to go. I had put myself in a hotel to not jeopardize my sobriety. And I just felt lost, alone, and hopeless. And a member of Natives Against Heroin had reached out to me, letting me know that there were other sober natives around the community. Natives Against Heroin has helped keep me sober by giving not only me, but many others hope that we as Native Americans are not just statistics. I am here calling out for help for my community. We need funds to get a cultural-based sober house for our community members to have a safe sober place to go after graduating treatment and also while they are waiting for treatment, because after they have taken their Rule 25, they are put on a waiting list, and that's where we lose most of our community members. We either lose them back to the streets, or even worse, drug overdoses. Our native community always seems to be overlooked, so I am here asking for help that you continue to fund our Natives Against Heroin program and also not overlook us anymore. You have helped us start something that has helped many Native Americans overcome drug addiction, have put them on a healthy lifestyle, given them hope that we can overcome this, all this drug addiction and all these statistics. And I just ask that you continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandara Walden, followed by Mary Resimias.
Hi, my name is Sandara Walden. I'm a sixth grader at Franklin Middle School. Last year, I went to Lucy Laney. I heard there was going to be an improvement on Penn Avenue North that ends at Lowry. I think it should go farther north. That's where Lucy Laney and New Horizon is. When I went to Lucy Laney, I was a part of safety patrol. Sometimes there would be cars running red lights or going too fast. Once or twice, there was almost car crashes. When I went to Lucy Laney, there would sometimes be shootings or even someone trying to get inside the school. That's why, that's why there's no longer safety patrol at Lucy Laney. I hope you think about improving, I mean, I hope you will think about expanding the improvement there. If that happened, Lucy Laney and New Horizon would be safer. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Mary Resimias, followed by Joel Weisman.
Hello, my name is Mary, and this is JT. Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words about affordable housing. I work as a Housing Operations Assistant at Alliance Housing Incorporated, and we make it our mission to allow everyone to make home for themselves regardless of criminal rental or housing background. Our work is dependent on the generous support from public funders, including Hennepin County, the State of Minnesota, and the federal government. JT Joyce is here with us this evening. He's a tenant of Alliance Housing and lives at 2519 Fremont. The city invested $513,000 from Neighborhood Stabilization Dollars and the Affordable Trust Fund. Thank you greatly for your investment in 2519 and multiple other properties. I support the current or higher budget for trust fund dollars in 2018. Thank you.
All right, good evening. My name is JT Joyce, and I lived at 2519 Fremont since 2014. And I own and operate a small residential construction company installing gutters, where I employ three people now. Before that, you know, my life was at a rocky state. You know, I lost my job of eight years and lost my housing, too, as well, and got UDs on my record because of the situation. But Alliance Housing gave me a second chance, so I can become a much more productive adult and have a safe and healthy environment to stay in. And I think it's a good idea that you guys increase your budget for housing, you know, so people can continue to make life better for themselves and give the space and opportunity for others to help others. That, thank you.
Joel Weisman, Joel Weisman, followed by Elizabeth Campbell.
Hi, good evening today. Thank you for having this public hearing and everyone here. My name is Joe Kreisman. I'm the Director of the Downtown Congrations and Homelessness, of which Tim Hart Anderson and many other senior clergy are members of. I wanted to come today on behalf of the Downtown Congrations, as well as the Minneapolis Make Homes Happen Coalition, and express our excitement for the upcoming, the Housing Stability Coordinator position that's been included in this year's budget. We're really excited about the nimble opportunities and ability to address to the complex and changing issues of affordable housing in Minneapolis. changing issues of affordable housing in Minneapolis. We hope that this position can do that in a really effective collaborative way with the community. One of the things that, that we've really been able to see as great successes, both with the collaboration of the congregations as well as in Make Homes Happen, is the impact and power that we get from building community and building a broad base of support as well as listening from a diverse group of people. And when we bring all those voices to the table, we can see a much greater impact. We see the response and the results that are actually going to make a meaningful change. And we're optimistic that this position gives, the city, gives CPED an opportunity to do a lot more of that community outreach, to lean on the knowledge, the experience that, that both leaders have and people who are experiencing housing instability. There's a lot of great ideas, great experience that is ready, that people are talking about that we hope that this Housing Stability Coordinator position can, can capture and can start implementing within the city's budget and the city's programs going forward. So we're really optimistic and thank you for including in the budget.
Elizabeth Campbell followed by Danielle Robinson-Brian.
I'd like to thank Creator for this opportunity to bring all these people together. And I'm really shy, so this is tough for me, but I'm here on behalf of Natives Against Heroin, I'm Elizabeth Campbell. I really like to speak for the community fabric as a whole. I'm nomadic, so I don't have an address to give you. I just wanted to, to let you know how much Natives Against Heroin has helped me personally in my life and, and in our neighborhoods. It's brought a lot of healing for me. My husband was a heroin addict and the scales of justice tipped and gave my children to the, to the attic. I've been separated from my children for a year. His money speaks louder than mine in this court. Not this court, but the one next door. And so Natives Against Heroin has helped me on that healing journey, helped me to understand addiction, which I was very naive about, even though I was married to it. Within that, we found healing, a larger healing happening with our community. You know that we're standing on sacred ground and we're hosting the Super Bowl this year, so we're not able to sweep this under the rug any longer. Our communities are suffering an epidemic and it's touched all the lives in this room in one way or the other. So we need, we need your continued support and I don't think you need me to tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Robinson-Brian. Akila Sanders-Reed.
Hi there, thank you for letting me speak this evening. My name is Akila Sanders-Reed and I moved to Minnesota about five years ago because this seems like the kind of place that could lead the way on climate justice and become a blueprint for twenty-first century cities. But it takes more than pretty words on paper. It takes dedication and intention and it takes investment. That's why I'm here tonight supporting the Clean Energy Franchise Fee and to have that revenue from that fee be devoted to meeting our renewable energy goals by prioritizing inclusivity and equity. We will fail at meeting our goals as long as we just do the minimum. No one who gets dragged somewhere ever makes a graceful entrance. Minneapolis has the opportunity to really put our money where our mouth is. Dedicated funding that prioritizes programs for renters, job programs for local workers and investment in developing renewable energy is critical. So I encourage you to support the Clean Energy Franchise Fee. Thank you very much.
Sonia Ortega followed by Maria Sisneal. Sisneal, thank you. Sonia.
Thank you, my name is Sonia Ortega. I'm here to speak on, in favor of the municipal ID proposal that is on the table. We consider this to be a matter of safety for our community. We, we are the people that do some of the lowest paying jobs and live in some of the highest crime areas. We become victims of crimes in, without an ID to, to show who you are or to prove who you are. We're also victims of the system. When, when we have a member of our community fall victim of a crime, we have no way of identifying them. So you, you gotta really look on your own life. Would you want your family to see this on Facebook? And this is the ID that we have. This is what we put on Facebook to ask the community, do you know who this is? Is in this hospital? This gentleman was hit by a hit and run over the weekend and this is what we see too much in our community. We need to resolve this problem. We need your help. This is not a frivolous thing that we're asking for. We need to get a solution. Right now that you are on time to, to see how is it that you can help our community, I really, really suggest that you do that. I'm not demanding anything, but as a human being, America has been known for being the country that fights injustice. There's an injustice against our community being committed when we don't have a voice and we don't have an ID. Really, this is what we have to do. Does anybody here feel that this is not dignifying? Would you want your family to see your picture on Facebook? And this is how you see, this is your father, your brother, your son? It, it is sad. I, I don't understand why is it, we have a, an administration that is against immigrants. We need the local government to do something to help our community. This is in your hands. You really have to touch your heart and see, we came here, we are productive members of community. I'm not talking about people that are caught committing a crime and therefore they need to be identified, which could also happen. But it, it is a, it is a public safety problem that we have as a community. I, I really hope that you don't forget, among all of the testimonies that you have had tonight, that this, this is a priority. There has to be a way that we can compromise.
Ms. Ortega, can you wrap up, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I really hope that you can make a commitment with our community and find a solution to our problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sisneal, I'm sorry, Ms. Ortega.
Maria Sisneal.
Sisneal, okay.
Buenas tardes, consejo de la ciudad y miembros.
Good afternoon, council members.
Estoy aquí, mi nombre es María Sisneros, soy una de las líderes de la comunidad, represento a MIRAC.
My name is María Sisneros, I am a leader in the community, I represent MIRAC.
En el dos mil nueve, el grupo de mujeres se liderazgo, estamos en la campaña de la ID municipal.
Since two thousand nine, a group of women, women in leadership have begun a struggle to try to pass the municipal ID.
Hemos trabajado duro y también más que nada por la necesidad que tiene la comunidad, no nomás inmigrantes sino mucha comunidad de color.
We have worked really hard and not just for immigrants, but many people in the community, including many people of color.
Esa, esa ahorita la oportunidad de este valle que se está ahorita discutiendo, nosotros como comunidad organizaciones estamos pidiendo ciento cincuenta mil, yo digo doscientos mil porque en realidad nuestra comunidad paga demasiados impuestos y también a los negocios.
So we are asking you to support this municipal ID at least with a hundred and fifty thousand, if not two hundred thousand dollars as we as a community pay way too many taxes.
Y es ahorita la oportunidad porque aquí, por ejemplo, Frey, él comentó en uno de los, de sus campañas que él iba a apoyar la ID municipal.
So this is a great opportunity because, for example, Frey has said that he will support the municipal ID while he was campaigning.
Y pues no queremos teoría, queremos acción ya porque desde el dos mil nueve hemos tocado puertas y realmente por una ID municipal mucha gente no ha podido atenderse a los hospitales.
So we, we don't want theory, we want action because without having a municipal ID or any ID, for example, many people have not been able to go into hospitals.
No pueden rentar un apartamento.
They can't rent an apartment.
Los hombres no pueden tener una oportunidad por no tener como identificarse.
Homeless people don't have opportunities because they are not able to identify themselves.
Los transgéneros.
The transgender people.
Y esta sería una gran oportunidad porque también le traidería a la ciudad más economía.
This would be a great opportunity because it would also bring more economy into the city.
Entonces porque en estos beneficios se beneficiaría la, la ciudad porque estamos proponiendo que también esta ID sea propuesta para los bancos, también para negocios que quieren dar descuentos del 10%.
This would also be good for the city because we want to have it connected to banks and have it connected to businesses that want to give discounts so that people would go to their businesses.
La gente puede rentar su apartamento.
People would be able to rent apartments.
Can we wrap, wrap up, please, Ms. Sisneal?
Sí, entonces es una oportunidad, gracias a ustedes y espero que esto no nada más sea, que se hable sino que sea acción. Gracias.
So thank you very much and hopefully this is not going to be something that you just talk about, but that you really take action on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sarah Lockhart followed by Kiagi Narukawa.
Hello, I'm Sarah Lockhart. I work at Domestic Abuse Project and I'm a children's therapist there. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I just want to say thank you for your continued support of the services we offer in the community at DAP, serving the whole family and stopping the intergenerational cycle of domestic violence. I'd like to share a really brief story, because I know it's late, with all of you about a child I've worked with at DAP and of course protecting their confidentiality or change identifying information. I have worked at DAP for seven years and I met Michael three years ago. He was ten months old and at the time his mom came to DAP after fleeing from her husband who was using abusive behavior towards her and her children and they are Minneapolis residents. Michael came through our door with three older siblings as well and when he arrived with his mom, he was unable to even go into our childcare drop-in center because he presented with such severe separation anxiety symptoms, severe night terrors and was having difficulty eating. He would often sit on his mom's lap during groups she participated in, in order to get some comfort. At the time, his mother enrolled her older children in individual and group therapy services and when she asked me, what about her son Michael? My heart broke and I had to say that we really only have a drop-in childcare center and no specific service to offer his son. Fortunately, I can say this is different now. With the help of the city's funding, our Zero to Three Program, we are now able to offer families developmental screenings and diagnostic work with mothers and their children so that they can heal from the trauma that they've experienced. We know that research tells us that this is the most effective in helping children impacted by trauma, to meet children's needs and so that they can reach their developmental milestones. Fast forward two years later, I began meeting with Michael and his mother. He's now age three and we meet for therapy each week. When Michael first started coming to see me, he was still struggling with separation from his mother and was unable to regulate his emotions and calm down. I talked to his mom about the trauma that he's experienced and helped her to understand what he was experiencing in his body since he was ten months old.
Can you wrap up, please?
I'm sure. Basically, we want to thank you for helping us and I recently met with a five-year-old girl actually earlier today and I had her pick out a feeling stuffed animal and she said she felt happy and I asked her why and she told me that she was glad that I was there every time I said I would be. And I think we need to continue to show up for kids and so I want to thank you for continuing to show up for kids that don't know that we can show up and that consistency can happen for them. So thank you.
Kiagi Narukawa followed by Teresa Norrell. Okay, then Joel Rodriguez. Sean Gesuski, I'm saying his name terribly, Gesuski, thank you.
Hello, Councilmember Johnson and council members. I'm here resident of Corcoran neighborhood and live at thirty-one, thirty-two, twenty-second Avenue South and, and the Director of the Alliance for Sustainability. We have about a thousand members in Minneapolis and just saying thank you for leadership on climate and energy. Minneapolis is respected around the state and nationally on working toward achieving our United Nations carbon goals. As you probably saw, the nations of the world were in Bonn, Germany and the US was not really doing much there. So we really need to accelerate achieving this, the UN carbon goal and this franchise fee increase will be able to help put dollars, five million dollars a year in achieving outcomes with businesses, with multifamily buildings and with homeowners. As Timothy shared, we could save two hundred eighty-five million dollars a year in wasted energy costs by investing in these solutions. And over the last two years, I've met with thirty other suburban communities that will be signing on to these carbon goals, including Eden Prairie, you know, Burnsville, Minnetoka, Bloomington. So they're looking toward Minneapolis for a pathway forward. So we're really excited that we could actually see how to achieve rapid carbon reductions with businesses and resident residents through this fee. I also encourage you to look at adopting St. Paul's Stable Building Ordinance so that all the new buildings that are coming into the city that are needing variances or city funding would, would be built to be more high, you know, to be the same performance as state-run buildings. Also encourage you to look at inclusionary zoning citywide to have affordable units in a lot of the new buildings that are being built. Speaking also in favor of the Pedestrian Safety Fund, investing in solutions for the heroin epidemic and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and, and also just encouraging you to promote other workforce development partnerships with the county. We have an aging population in the Twin Cities and we need to fill all these new jobs with, within the trades and other areas. So please work with Hennepin County on connecting communities of color with these good jobs.
Can you, can you wrap up, please?
And the last one is if people are worried about property tax increases, let's just get more people living in houses. We, you passed the, you know, the intentional communities law and let's figure out other ways of matching up seniors that have an empty room with somebody who needs a place to stay and then people can afford their property taxes. So anyway, thanks again.
Thank you. Next we have Elizabeth Mukanga and followed by Andy Pearson. Either one. Euthropic Burnett? Oh, I'm sorry, you're, you're Mr. Pearson?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hello, it's really good to be here today. My name's Andy Pearson. I live in the East Phillips neighborhood at twenty-six, twenty-nine, eighteenth and I'm here to speak on the franchise fee today. But before I do that, I just want to say that in case anybody isn't able to place my address on a map, it's one block south of Little Earth. I am not native. I've not received any of the money that's, that's been discussed today around community-based safety initiatives. I am just a neighbor, but I want to take just a second to speak very strongly in favor of that money being renewed at the amount that it was last time. I, I have seen as an involved community member, the incredibly positive effects of those groups like Natives Against Heroin and I applaud their work and I stand in awe of it. I'd encourage the council to do the same. So talk about the franchise fee for just a second here. I strongly support the increase in the franchise fee and I want to recall a moment that happened in this room about two years ago, which I was also here for, which was when the city council voted to commit to never invest in fossil fuel industry stocks as a city entity. to commit to never invest in fossil fuel industry stocks as a city entity. Fossil fuel divestment, we called it, and that day was an 11 to 2 vote in favor of divestment. And the two who didn't vote in favor of it said, "Well, if we only had a concrete proposal with numbers that would actually make change, this would be unanimous, and we'd be voting for it." So the times now, this is a concrete proposal with numbers, and I'm calling y'all on it. I would hope that we get unanimous support for increasing the franchise fee to address the climate crisis on a local level in Minneapolis, because that is what this is about, and the time is now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Eutropic Burnett. Followed by Florencio. Ms. Burnett, welcome.
Thank you and good evening, council members. My name is Eutropic Burnett, and I am a homeowner in the Hawthorne neighborhood, 2218 Chupac Avenue North. I am also the Equity Engagement Manager at Urban Homeworks. I'm here to speak to the council today about asking you guys to please triple the money for affordable housing. I know that's a big jump, but I want to speak to you guys about the fact that I have family, friends, who went from paying $800 a month for a two-bedroom to $1,500 a month for a two-bedroom. They are highly mobile. People are out here looking for housing, and they're making $15 an hour, but they still cannot afford that $1,200 to $1,400 a month rent. And we know that there has been a huge rent increase in the city of Minneapolis over the last few months, last year. As the Equity Engagement Manager at Urban Homeworks, we have over 400 people on our waiting list. We get at least 20 to 30 people calling and collectively calling and walking in every day looking for affordable housing in the city, not in Carver County, not in Dakota County, but in Minneapolis. They want to live in Minneapolis. I have over 400 vacant lots in my community. There is no way that I actually have over 400 vacant lots in my community, and then I see families sleeping in a bus shelter. That doesn't make sense to me. I pay property taxes, and I don't want my property taxes go toward a dome. I don't even care. As a single mother, it's hard for me to afford that increase in property taxes, but I'm willing to pay that if that means that I don't see a family sleeping on the bus stop trying to stay warm in a shelter. I'm willing to pay the increase as a single mother, as a homeowner, if that means that I don't have to worry about those kids coming to school and they not worried about, they not knowing where they're going to live at. You know, it doesn't make any sense that 400 vacant lots and over 400 people on our waiting list and families are living in bus shelters? Mary Jones is overpacked? It doesn't make sense that we can spend so much money for a dome and just forget about the people that we're here to serve. So I ask the council, those who are staying, thank you. Those who have did their term, thank you. And I'm charging you guys to please put more money for affordable housing. This matters. It's for the whole region. It's not just the fourth ward, the fifth ward, the eighth ward, the 10th ward. It matters for all of us, because we are all one paycheck away from being homeless.
Thank you. Florencio, followed by Julio Martinez.
Muchas gracias. Buenas noches a todos ustedes. Mi nombre es Florencio Campos, miembro activo de la organización Sembrando Poder.
Good evening. My name is Julio, my name is Florencio, and I am an active member of an organization called Sembrando Poder, Cultivating Power.
Retomando nuevamente la responsabilidad de cada uno de nosotros, venimos a reclamar una ID municipal.
Thinking about the responsibility for each and every one of us, I'm here to talk about the municipal ID.
Cuando hay una necesidad dentro de nuestra comunidad, y hablando de la ciudad de Minneapolis, les corresponde a ustedes responder con poder para poder atender a nuestra comunidad.
There's a need within our community, and it's a responsibility of you to respond to that need, as you have the power to do so.
También para recordarles que otros estados nos han puesto el ejemplo entregando ID municipales a sus habitantes.
And to remind you that other states have given, and other cities have given their residents municipal IDs.
Quiero regresar en próximas sesiones de esta casa para poder felicitar a cada uno de ustedes, sabiendo que han asumido su responsabilidad atendiendo a los habitantes de su ciudad.
I want to be able to come back here and to congratulate those of you who have taken the responsibility and have fulfilled this need for this municipal ID.
No necesitamos más policías en la ciudad.
We don't need more police in the city.
Lo que necesitamos son programas de prevención del delito.
What we need are programs that prevent crimes from happening.
Es bien importante que cada uno de ustedes piense en cuál es la prioridad de nuestra comunidad, y en este caso, es el ID municipal.
And it's so a true responsibility to think about the needs of all of the members of our community, and in this case, it is the municipal ID.
Muchas gracias. Buenas tardes, y nos vemos pronto por aquí.
Thank you very much, and we will see each other again here.
Julio Martinez, followed by Carol Becker.
Si, hola. Buenas noches a todos los miembros del consejo.
Good evening to all the city council members.
A mi nombre es Julio Martinez, miembro activo de Sembrando Poder también.
My name is Julio Martinez, and I am an active member of Sembrando Poder.
Queremos pedirles que no ignoren a nuestra comunidad, ya que nuestra comunidad necesita una ID municipal.
We're asking you that you do not ignore our community, as we need to have a municipal ID.
Nosotros traemos un ejemplo de ocho estados que han aprobado esta ID municipal y doce ciudades.
We bring to you examples of eight states and 12 cities that have approved of municipal IDs.
Aquí hay una guía que les vamos a dejar para que ustedes puedan revisar y para que no se compliquen cómo pueden aprobar una ID municipal en Minneapolis.
We're going to leave this guide with you, so you can look it over and see that it's not complicated, and we can pass a municipal ID here in Minneapolis as well.
También queremos pedir que den fondos para que puedan llevar a cabo esta ID municipal.
We are asking that you give funds, so that you can make this happen, this municipal ID.
También quiero recordarles que también nuestra comunidad paga impuestos en el estado de Minnesota.
I want to remind you that our community pays taxes here in Minnesota.
Hay muchos negocios que pagan más de 200,000 por año.
There's many businesses that pay over $200,000 per year.
Y no, y queremos que nos digan que no hay fondos para llevar a cabo este programa.
And we don't want to hear that there's no funds to make this program become real.
Porque o que van, o que no encuentran fondos porque tienen otros asuntos, pero para nosotros esto es muy importante.
Or that you say that you're using funds for other things, because this program is very important for us.
Y yo creo que ustedes es su responsabilidad de que la comunidad esté segura y está en sus manos de hacer cambios.
So it's your responsibility to make sure that the community is secure, and it's in your hands to create change.
Y que no se les olvide que todos ustedes han sido elegidos por el pueblo, por la comunidad que los elige.
And to not forget that you are elected by the community.
Y ustedes están aquí para apoyarnos, y quiero darles las gracias a todos por escucharme.
So you are here to support us, and I want to thank you for listening to us.
Thank you. Carol Becker, followed by Chris Webley. Jacqueline Radkowicz. Followed by Charissa Utaut. Yep, you're up. That's okay.
I'm speak, my name is Jacqueline Radkowicz, 1603 Adams Street, Northeast Minneapolis, Minnesota. I'm speaking to the Clean Energy Franchise Fee. I believe it should be increased. I also believe that it needs to be used for what it's said it's being used for, and that it shouldn't be diluted in any way. It shouldn't be moved to any other programs. I also feel strongly that it needs to be used for people who are marginalized, specifically low-income or otherwise disenfranchised communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Charissa Utaut. Valentina McKenzie.
Good evening. I live at 1410 Colorado Avenue South in St. Louis Park, but I work for SeTul as a fast food organizer at 3715 Chicago Avenue South. My job as organizer is to go out and talk to fast food workers, and one of my biggest complaints that I'm hearing about is wage theft and not having the enforcement laws be reached as to the ordinances that you guys have put into effect as far as sick and safe time goes. Workers need, obviously, they're low-wage workers, so they need the money that they are entitled to. I have had complaints from all the stores inside of Minneapolis. I just filed 15 this week either on safe and sick and safe time ordinances or on wage theft claims. It is a huge problem here, and I'm asking for the council to please consider putting more money into enforcement, both from the city and into partnerships, of $500,000 for partnerships to be able, for workers like me who are going into these stores and dealing with these workers who are experiencing these things. These are ordinances that you guys have signed and have put into law, and it's not being followed by the businesses. So I please ask you guys to consider putting more money into enforcement in the city of Minneapolis and standing up for the people that need it the most.
Thank you. Thank you. Michael Norcross. And with, after Mr. Norcross, I don't have anyone else signed up, so if anyone wants to speak, if you could just go talk to the city clerk and get on the list. Otherwise, we'll just ask people if they want to speak. So, Mr. Norcross.
All right. Thank you for allowing me to come up and speak. I'm trying to make this quick. But my name is Michael Norcross. I'm part of the Natives Against Heroin, and I'm also a drumming instructor at the Indian Health Board in South Minneapolis. And what we do is we teach kids how to make drums much like this one here. And I just want to highlight some of the history of our American Indians from some of the policies that we've experienced. One is the outlawing of all of our spirituality, which we fought for and it's back for, and since 1978, we have it again. And also the Indian Reorganization Act, where we were moved to urban areas also as a form of assimilation. So we have all these hardships we face, and one of them is the heroin epidemic. And we're pretty high on the percentages with the deaths in the heroin epidemic among a lot of other issues. But so out of all those tools for our own destruction that we turn to, I just encourage every, all of our native youth to turn to something a little more beneficial for their health and well-being, and I'm walking proof that the drum saves lives. It saved my life and helped me to empower, feel empowered to live a sober, healthy lifestyle. And so what we do is, we say, "The cure is in the culture", with Natives Against Heroin. We say that. It's one of our slogans. And so what we try to do with the program, with the drumming, is we try to plant that seed of, if drumming's not their thing, we want them to try to go out and find their drum, what is that thing that makes them feel empowered to live a healthy, happier, clean lifestyle, and so there's a lot of tools in our culture that allow them to feel empowered and stuff like that. So thank you for having me. That's pretty much all I have.
Thank you. That's the last speaker I have. Is there anyone else who would care to speak? Sir? Please identify yourself.
Hi, folks. My name is Fred Molsel. I live at 400 North First Street in Ward 3. I hadn't planned on talking tonight, but there's been 13 comments about pedestrian crossings, bicycling in the city. This started when Diane Hofsteepe was on the council. Jacob may remember this, but I talked also to Steve Fletcher. I'm trying to get a hold of the city to find out what the criteria is on getting crosswalks painted on an intersection that's not signalized. And this has gone on for the last five years, and I'm getting either conflicting answers or nothing. And the reason why I wanted to bring this up now, I was going to wait, but with the Super Bowl being here, there's going to be a lot of people from other countries that are going to be here in town, and they're going to expect to be able to cross the streets when given the opportunity, and without the markings, something's going to happen. Now, the city is leaving itself wide open for a lawsuit if they don't have any standardization or technical reference or regulation to fall back on. So I wanted to bring this up to you folks now, and thank you for your service, and have a good holiday.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else care to speak? Anyone else care to speak? If not, a motion to close the public hearing be in order? Been moved. Is there a second? On approval, say aye. Aye, opposed, that carries. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much, and have a good night. Thank you. Thank you to everybody that came.